Cold order, roll call.
Dr. Benedetto?
Here.
Mr. Delia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Here. Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Charlie Gurley?
Like to salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the township clerk on July 19, 2019. Emergency notice. There is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. Uh, there'll be no smoking in here. Board policy, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Minutes for approval, January 22nd, 27th, 2020. Resolution memorialization Roosevelt ordinance approval.
Can we have a, uh, motion to accept the minutes and was there any questions?
I make a motion to accept.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dr. Benedetto?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Alright, now we have resolutions and memorializations, uh, based on the, uh, meeting, uh, last month with regards to, uh, the COVID cases. You'll see, uh, on the agenda, uh, four, uh, different matters for approval. Uh, we should probably have them voted on, uh, together.
Okay.
Did everybody, unless anybody, uh, has an objection to any of, uh, them in particular, we'll offer, uh, a vote on all the four items, uh, starting with HO consistency approval. And for the record, um, also the others related to, um, the approval of the Roosevelt ordinance, approval of the golf course overlay, approval of the C-1 zone. Is there a, uh, motion to approve all those?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dr. Benedetto?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, cases carry to March 23rd, 2020. Uh, first one is Mamanno, Block 33 dot 14, Lot 2, 710 West Park Avenue, Oakhurst Zone T1. The second one, uh, case carried to March 23rd, 2020, is Toll NJ1 LLC, Block 35, Lot 6, WPA and Green Grove Road, Ocean, Zone R1.
So, Mr. Kirk, um, is it fair to say that, uh, both of these matters can be carried without further notice?
Yes.
So, anybody in the audience who's here for those cases, uh, uh, they won't be heard and you're more than welcome to come back here at the March 23rd.
And we're gonna shuffle these. And we're gonna, we're gonna shuffle, um, a couple of the, um, cases tonight, so makes everything a little easier for everyone involved. The first case heard tonight will be Ernesto Sures, Lot 26.04, Lot 28, 10 Avis Place, Ocean, Zone R4.
Uh, the, uh, the following case, um, will be the one marked three on the agenda. That's, uh, 1111 Highway 35, Ms. Krimko's case. And so logically, uh, the final case will be handled also by Ms. Krimko. Uh, that's Logan Community, I'll say. We have Mr. Tilton here tonight, counsel for the applicant.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Richard Tilton, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Jeffrey Sures and his father, Ernesto Sures.
Mr. Tilton, do you have, uh, one, uh, expert witness to testify today?
I have Mr. Samot.
Mr. Samot, would you stand and raise your right hand, please? Probably tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help the God.
Yes, I do.
And, uh, you are a professional engineer, are you not?
I am.
Would you provide, uh, the board and the public, uh, the benefit of your professional background? Even though we've heard you testify, uh, times, you can give us a quick summary.
Uh, quick summary, I've, uh, been licensed by the state as a surveyor and engineer since 1992. And I've been working in the field of engineering and surveying probably for thirty odd years. And I've had my own business since 1999.
Are you testifying tonight as a TV?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, uh, I ask if the board will accept, uh, the credentials?
We accept as credentials.
Yes. Um, for the record, the, um, property is Block 2604, Lot 28. It's commonly known as 10 Avis Place in Oakhurst. The, the property sits at the end of a cul-de-sac. It's in your R4 zone. It is, uh, consists of 21,971 square feet. It's presently approved with a single-family, um, French-type house owned by Mr. Sures's parents, who are also here with him.
Mr. Tilton?
Yes?
If I could just stop you there.
Yep.
Do we have any reports tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Higgins has reports.
Alright, so, uh, normally, uh, we usually have Mr. Higgins and then Mr. Fitzgerald, uh, give a summary so we can get some of the basics and then get down to any questions.
That's terrific, thank you.
I'll summarize the report.
Yeah.
It's a 21,971 square foot parcel at the end of the cul-de-sac on Avis Court. Um, the applicant's proposing to subdivide it into two lots. One lot will be 9,257 square feet, which will be, new house will be built on. The other lot will be 12,714 square feet and the existing house is gonna remain on that lot. The variances that are necessary, minimum lot area for the smaller lot that's gonna have a house built on it. Uh, the ordinance requires 10,000 square feet and the site will be 9,257 square feet. The, the, the whole lot is really more than double what the ordinance would require for two lots. And it's basically, this lot's smaller because of the location of the existing residence. It's a very wide residence and it extends further towards the center of the lot. So, in order to, to create two lots, one has to be a little bit smaller. Minimum lot width and frontage again for the smaller lot. Uh, the ordinance requires a width of 90 feet and a frontage of 54 feet. That proposed lot has a width of 74.24 feet and a frontage of approximately 45 feet. Uh, it's not indicated on the plan, so I, I approximated it. And again, the same reasons with the house, that white house forces the lot line up to the north more and makes that lot smaller. Uh, minimum lot depth, the ordinance requires a minimum depth of 100 feet. Lot 2801, which is a larger lot, has a depth of 78 feet. And Lot 2802, which is a smaller lot, has a depth of 75 feet. And basically, the existing depth is 75 feet for, for Lot 28. It's the short, the depth is the shortest distance between the front lot line and the rear lot line. Uh, so, that's really, it's, there are technical variances there. They're not really being created by the subdivision because they're really there, there except it's only on the one lot whereas now there'd be two lots. And also, the, uh, the zoning table shows them incorrectly and should be corrected. Uh, minimum side setback, the ordinance requires a side setback of 10 feet. And Lot 2801 has a side setback on one side of 4 feet. And there's also a combined side yard setback of 25 feet required. And the combined side yard setback is 15.8 feet. And again, the, the reason for that is to have adequate separation between residences. And actually, when you, when you have the four-foot side yard setback, uh, next to the existing residence on this, on the larger lot, the distance between that and the proposed residence on the smaller lot's about 45 feet. So, there's substantial room between the two. You could eliminate that variance or reduce it by taking that one side lot line and shooting it straight back rather than having it bend by the garage. That would reduce the size of, uh, the smaller lot, making that variance a little bit greater. Uh, with six of one half a dozen of the other there, I don't think it's a big deal one way or the other. The minimum rear setback, the existing rear setback of the existing residence is 13.8 feet and that's not being impacted by the application. Uh, waivers, there's no need for a tree location preservation plan because there are no trees that are gonna be impacted by the application. Uh, the number of trees, the ordinance requires seven trees, uh, and the plan proposes two. And I reckon, I recommend that any resolution of approval require, require compliance with that section of the ordinance so that the trees are provided. Uh, street trees, three are required total for the two lots. Two are proposed and I recommend that actually three be provided, two on the larger lot at the time of the subdivision, uh, filing of the subdivision and one on the smaller lot at the time of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Um, Mr. Tilton, uh, with regards to the design waivers mentioned by Mr. Higgins, specifically as to the number of trees and street trees, uh, do you stick a leg there and comply with that?
Yes, of course.
Very good, uh, before we start with Mr. Fitzgerald, just, uh, make a notation to our secretary. Please mark the package as, uh, V1, which you probably already have done, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a, uh, report dated February 28th. I'll summarize, so, this Jim was pretty thorough. Uh, as you know, the net, surrounding neighborhoods, uh, probably developed, so all the infrastructure utilities necessary to serve the development are there. Uh, there's some right-of-way improvements required by way of a depressed curb and driveway apron, maybe some modifications to the sidewalk to accommodate them. They need to be bonded and they need to meet all barrier-free requirements. Uh, the grading plan submitted indicates that the lot can be developed without any substantive adverse impact upon adjacent properties. The soil fit information indicates that the house can have a full basement with no problem, given depth of water table. I have no problem, other than that engineering-wise, it's mostly planning issues.
Any of the board members have any questions, uh, for our board professionals?
Uh, I do. Uh, you, you indicated, uh, Jim, that, um, the number of trees, it says a total of seven trees required. The plan proposes two. You're recommending seven be?
Recommended seven, yes.
And, and you're agreeing to that, Mr. Tilton?
Well, first of all, what, we, we can't have more than one person speak and if that's your claim, Mr. Tilton, he isn't informed and so you can confirm.
From, from looking at the site, looking at the site and the site and the plan that's been proposed, the existing trees on the site are small flowering trees and the ordinance is really geared toward shade trees. So, it would be another five trees. You're proposing two street trees and I'm saying you should have a third street tree and then four more trees somewhere else on the two lots.
Alright, so, Mr. Tilton, on the record, you're clarifying, uh, that, that you will fully comply with that?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Benedetto, is this satisfied?
Yes, I just, trying to get clarification, I just, it doesn't say that, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're gonna get the seven.
Any other board members have any, uh, questions, comments of our, uh, board professionals? Um, Jim, do you have any concerns at all with this application?
No.
Mr. Tilton, in light of the, uh, testimony by the professionals, do you even wanna ask any questions?
I don't think so.
Of your expert?
I do want the board to know that I did send a certified and regular mail to Lot, the owners of Lot 29. That's contiguous, I think, to the north of the property. And it's part of your applicant, more, part of my submission to the, um, to the secretary as to whether or not they wanted or had lands that were available for sale and they did not indicate that they were able to, um, operate or sell the property, any parts of the property.
Uh, any of the board members have any questions of, uh, Mr. Samot? Uh, hearing none, uh, Mr. Tilton, uh, I'm sure you wanna reserve the right of rebuttal. Uh, Mr. Chair, I suggest that we open this up now to any, uh, questioning by the public of either our board professionals or Mr. Samot. You can come up. Come up to the, uh, microphone.
Please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Julia Calvani, this is, uh, 376 West Park Avenue. I, um, occupy this property on, um, on West Park Avenue behind this proposed property. Um, and I just would like to say that, um...
Uh, excuse me, uh, so, uh, it's a technical matter, but normally in these applications, at this point in time, we just have, uh, people from the public ask questions. Because we've already been through all the testimony, and this chair, I, I would suggest, if Mr. Tilton, the board members are, are comfortable, uh, we can, uh, merge the two since it's such a small application. And with that in mind, seeing affirmation from the board members and their chair affirming it, would you raise your right hand, please, and, uh, confess as well that you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help the God.
Well said. So, you can either ask questions or give your, uh, statement.
Okay, I'll make a statement and then I'll ask a question. Um, my family is the original property owners of this home, uh, owning it's own, over fifty years. So, uh, in the last fifteen or so years, the property across the street has been received two additional subdivisions from the original property. The property next door to us has been subdivided into two additional homes, um, in addition to the original home occupying the property and now the one next to it is now being ever-homed. So, it's starting to get pretty, pretty reality. Um, uh, my question is, I'm going to ask again, as much of this new home that we use, um, blocks come out new, the better. My question, um, is, do you run along the side of the property, um, the side of the house?
Mr. Tilton, can you answer that or can Mr. Samot answer that? Where do you live relative to this, is it Lot 36?
Uh, I believe it's Lot 36, yeah.
Lot 36, Lot 36 doesn't abut this property.
Yeah, this actually...
I mean, yeah, I'm not saying you can't see it.
No.
It's a point back in there.
It has to, so, if you touch the property...
Sure. Hang on, uh, Bill, I mean, Jim, Jim. I'm looking at you saying how the, um, that you felt like the, uh, the variance that we're doing here is kinda consistent with what's been going on in the, what's been going on in the community recently? Is that, does it feel like it's a whole crowd?
Well, it's consistent with, with the density that's being, uh, proposed by the master plan. The master plan basically says just one house every 10,000 square feet. And here you got a 22,000 square foot lot and they're putting two houses on it. So, it's consistent with the density concurrent. And this house is quite a distance away from the house on Lot 36. There's another property between, between where the house is and 36 and there's some vegetation on that property.
Yeah, didn't you mention 29, they would not sell? I don't know if he's...
Hey, Mr. Tilton?
Mr. Tilton?
Uh, the chair is asking a question, I'm sorry.
They're, they're kinda in between 29 and Lot 2802?
Right.
You're saying no, you tried to contact?
Oh, I, more than that, I, yeah, she butts up to Andrew and Karen Nunes-Vias. There's an extra copy just for the last one.
Was this already, uh, been submitted?
Yes, it's submitted to the, to your club.
Okay. Is this part of the, uh, package? But this is your notice, I see. So, uh, just for the records, uh, to make it easy, we'll mark this as, uh, well, actually, it's A1.
Yes, things are going well.
A1 for identification. And, uh, for the record, uh, uh, Mr. Tilton has provided a copy of a letter by him dated January 17, 2020, uh, in reference to this application. And it's to the, uh, the property owner noted, and I think it's, uh, N-E-V-S-V-A-I-S. Anybody wanna see a copy of this?
You know, I just wanted to make sure if that was...
I just have a quick question. Um, so there's, it looks like there's a driveway behind the property, is that correct?
Yeah, there are, uh...
You guys have no access to that?
Flag lot, there.
Flag lot, yeah, they have no...
They have no access to that? Okay. So, the only access is through Avis Place?
Yes.
Got it?
Alright, um, I suggest that everybody generally knows, uh, the location of the property, uh, owned by the neighbor. And, Mr. Tilton, have you had a chance to, uh, discuss the, the point raised by the neighbor? Do you have any other, uh, maybe, uh, thoughts on it?
Well, there is one tree along in that back left corner. Um, just a main matter of perspective, the, the house is, is, the nearest point of the house is 50 feet from her back line. But we would certainly put one, maybe, two of the required trees in that general area along that back left property line. I don't wanna propose any type of hedging there because that's our, that's our tight line, that's our tight setback.
Mr. Higgins, do you have any comments on that?
I, I think that's fine. I, I think it's, it's a substantial distance away from the house on Lot 36. It's 50 feet from the property line and more than that to the house.
So, based on, uh...
So, they'll want to put some trees there to soften the view. Quite frankly, there's, there's nothing offensive about a single-family house in a single-family zone.
So, would you suggest any particular, uh, location of the trees or not?
I can work with, with Mr. Samot on that, but you don't wanna get it too close to the house because you don't want it to impact the house. So, I would say probably with the, where, where the setback lines meet at that point.
Alright, so if this, uh, application is approved, uh, one of the conditions could be that it would be subject to, uh, approval by Mr. Higgins of the location of, uh, the trees?
No.
And based on the analysis of whether or not any tree should be in a general location mentioned by the neighbor?
And, and just for the record too, I did not see that 16-inch tree that's on the property. So, that's goes towards the, the seven trees that are required, so they would be required to put four more trees in.
So, it's a reduction, you mean?
Yeah, it would be instead of five, it would be four more. And still have the seven trees.
When you look at the distribution of where the trees are gonna be, what were you thinking if you added four more trees?
I think they, well, put one in the location we're talking about now for, for, to help buffer the house a little bit. Screen the view. And another would be a street tree and then the other two wherever they wanna put them on the site. I don't think there's anything critical about it.
But since they're already gonna give five trees, shouldn't we just ask for another tree?
I'm, so, I'm, I'm a little confused. I thought that we were gonna get five additional trees and you also included a street tree. So, is that six trees?
No, that's part of the five. The ordinance requires 15 trees per acre.
Right.
When you look at the site, it's no less than a half acre.
Right.
So, that, there's a total of seven trees required on the site.
Seven point five trees?
It's actually seven point two, I think it was. So, I rounded down, rather than rounding up.
Alright, that's good, we're good with that.
And one of those trees has to be a street tree.
Okay.
When, when I did my calculation, I didn't see the 16-inch tree that's on the site, the mature tree that's on the site. So, that goes towards counting the seven. So, now they got three, they would have three trees that are shown on the plan and they would have to have four additional to meet the seven. I thought it was five because I didn't see the one tree.
And one of those trees is a street tree?
That's correct.
And the others don't have to be street trees?
The others don't have to be street trees, no.
Mr. Tilton, do you have any suggestions based on the commentary by the various board members and Mr. Higgins?
No, we're gonna, we'll comply with whatever, however many trees, Mr. Higgins, whatever they're requesting. It sounded right to me, the formula sounded right.
So, Mr. Higgins, is it fair to say it's, uh, four additional trees for what's?
Four, four additional trees.
So, it's one street tree and three trees, uh, one of which will be located somewhere in the vicinity we've been discussing to possibly shield, uh, the neighbor? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Any other board members have any comments on that?
But if we need a, an additional tree for the, for the neighbor, that would be acceptable.
I think that's up to the applicant.
There's probably enough with, yeah. What's that? Yeah, that would be one of the trees.
The neighbor tree.
The neighbor tree, would be one of the trees that Mr. Higgins is requiring.
So, uh, uh, doctor, are you pressing this point or are you, uh...
Well, I'm just concerned about the, you know, the, uh, the, uh, person in the neighborhood. I don't, you're, we're not looking at the trees, we, there's no house built yet, you know? Um, you know, we would want our professionals to use their discretion. But, you know, if the ordinance says seven trees, it's seven trees, so...
We'll work with Mr. Higgins wherever he...
One person's on my view here, so we're, we're making an exception to the variance, right? Because if there's, you know, variance, it's under the allotment, right? At 9,257, right? We're making that, we're making, it's a, we're including a variance, right? That's lower than the actual lot size. So, in consideration for that, I just wanna make sure that whoever's being, um, who moved in before this actually has some preservation of what her view was before. So, if we can figure out how to add a couple more trees so she can have a nice, listed backyard, that would be appreciated.
Right. So, if it has to go beyond the four, uh, we...
Mr. Higgins, do you have any, uh, comments with regards to, uh, making an applicant like this put in an additional tree based on what is required under the ordinance?
Well, well, a lot sizes, a lot of the size, there's no question about that. I just broke the microphone. Uh, the, that side of the lot, everything conforms. So, you get the setbacks conform, both rear and side yard setbacks. There's a large area in the back of the house that's, that's fully conforming. So, I, I think to, to have some sort of a nexus between requiring additional trees in that area and, you know, the, the smaller lot size, I just don't think there's a, cor, that, anything that correlates there.
Gentlemen, do you agree with, uh, the analysis by Mr. Higgins? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. So, it looks like, um, if the, uh, application is approved, uh, it would only be four additional trees, one being, uh, street and, uh, one of the, uh, three trees being in the location we discussed.
Okay.
Is that fair to say, everybody?
And what, what, what we can do is put two or three, two or three of those trees, or three of the trees there.
Cluster. Under my cluster.
Yeah, right there.
There you go, alright.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Were there any other, uh, comments or questions from folks in the, uh, audience?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Alright.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Will be done?
Yes.
Yes.
We now need a, uh, a motion to either approve...
Make a motion for a positive resolution?
Right, any conditions in particular?
Uh, Mr. Higgins?
With the recommendations of Mr. Higgins and, uh, with the variances.
So, second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
And then announce the next case?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have to do block, lot, all that?
You go. Oh, you are up.
You are up.
You are up.
You're wasting your time.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the, the next case will be 1111 Highway 35 LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Siano, members of the board, Jennifer Krimko, Commandeuse of Man Aaron here on behalf of the applicant. While my, uh, engineer is on his way out... While my, uh, engineer is on his way up, just by way of background, you may remember, we had an application for this property that never got heard. It was a parking variance application. When that tenant, uh, decided not to proceed, it was discovered in that process that there were some nonconformities on the site and that some work had been done without the benefit of approvals. The new owner didn't realize that repairing sidewalk and changing pavement and putting up a fence required approval. So we were in, so we transferred it into the owner's name, and we've met with Bill, I think, three times, if not four now, in technical review. And I know he's been out to the site at least once, if not twice. And I'm happy to tell you that we can agree to everything in his letter. So let's start there, there's no engineering issues as it relates to his letter, and there's only one request in Jim's letter, and we can agree to that, and that would be the irrigation. So.
All right, so let's, uh, mark the package as B one, and Mr. Higgins, do you want to read a paraphrase report?
I'll summarize it, it's, basically, it's a site that has a lot of pre-existing nonconformities. And most of them, lot width, front yard setback, side yard setback, block coverage, freestanding sign setback, freestanding sign location, parking space location, the parking space width, and the parking in the front yard are all existing conditions that aren't being changed at all. Several pre-existing conditions are being improved or eliminated, the sign location in a curved area, the existing sign is not in a curved area. They're proposing to curb it, so that nonconforming condition's being eliminated. Uh, the curved landscaped islands in the parking area, there are none, there's no landscaping on the site at all at this point. There are no curved islands at all, that's being improved, there will, will, in the front of the site have curved landscaped islands. Number and location of curb cuts, the entire site is one big curb cut right now, and they're providing better traffic circulation, uh, providing a, a, an area where they can pull in and a separate area to pull out, so I think that's being improved. The minimum landscaped area required, the site has no landscaping at all in the entire site. They're providing nineteen point five percent of the site to be landscaped in the front yard and twelve percent on the, on the entire site, so that's a significant improvement.
And based on our agreement to comply with, uh, Bill's request, we're actually going to be adding to that landscaping.
Okay.
I think it indicated that.
Just a little bit of side work to go because it's just dumped onto the paper.
And, uh, minimum landscaped area along the front property lines, technically, that's a new variance because there's no landscaping there now, and, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that's being, that's being improved significantly. Landscaped area along public streets, that's the one that technically it's a new variance because there's no landscaping along the public streets right now. And you have to have, can't have landscaping other than sod within ten feet of the right of way. And the only way to get landscaping in the front yard is to put regular landscaping up to the right of way, so that's what they proposed. I asked for an underground sprinkler system, they said they're going to provide it, and there's no trees on the site now, so they, uh, don't need a tree location preservation plan. Again, with the fifteen trees per acre, eight are required on the site, three trees are provided, and the plan, I don't see anyplace else to put trees where they're going to survive. So I think that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's adequate, it's an improvement. And then the street trees, I don't see anywhere they can put street trees there that make any sense. So, uh, and then there's some inaccuracies on the zoning table that need to be corrected.
Chairman, I have a report dated February twenty-eighth, uh, as Jennifer mentioned, we've had a number of technical review meetings, uh, on this site. Basically, the biggest thing that there, this is one of those sites that was badly impacted by the dualization of thirty-five in nineteen seventy-seven. Where these sites all had decent depth front yards, and now there's nothing. So this site, the, the press curb actually favors the north or far uphill, you know, upstream side of the property, and most of the parking is going to be in the back. And so there's no visual, the rest of the curb that's not depressed has such a short face that you can basically pull it off the highway. Anywhere in the front yard, it's a free for all. So the applicant has agreed to provide the two curved islands at the north and south corners of, of the, of the westerly side of the site along the highway. And also put in, uh, you can see it if you look at the exhibit that's up there, a little triangular island that's going to be mountable, okay? It's not going to, if you hit it, you're not going to lose your teeth and go see Duck Joe or anything like that, but, okay, um, but it's going to give you a visual clue.
I'm happy if you send them over, it's quite all right.
It's going to give you a visual clue that there's a separate entrance and exit, separate traffic, and, and when you make that right turn on the south side of that island, you'll see the striping that kind of guides you to the parking in the back, so the huge safety thing in my mind, and, and I'm really happy that they agree to that. The rest of the stuff is removing some superfluous pavement and putting in like a little bit of a rock garden area to just to kind of disperse the drainage as it comes off. And, and getting the lighting in the backyard, uh, I think in both yards, as close to conforming as possible. It's really not possible to get this conforming without ripping out some of the new pavement that, you know, the applicant put a lot of money into the site to take a dump and make it a lot better, and it's a shame to rip it up for.
Did board members have any questions of our professionals?
Is there any sidewalks provided there?
I'm sorry?
Is there any sidewalks provided there already?
Uh, well, most of the parking heads into the building, and so you'll be getting out of your car and sort of walking up the aisle of the parking lot.
Thirty-five is there, there's no.
No, there are none, but I mean, there's room if the state wants it in the right of way. So there's nothing to, nothing to connect with on, on the highway.
I have, so, right now, currently, there's, it's all blacktop, correct?
Yep.
And so your, your proposal is that you're in that back area along, I guess, along your property line, you're going to be putting in?
If you give me, let me.
Go ahead, so tell me, show us what, tell us what you're doing.
Okay, so just by way, by way of background, just, the, the, the building was in a dilapidated state, my client purchased it, did all the aesthetic upgrades, and could have moved someone in with exactly how it was, and unfortunately for him, he decided he wanted to do some site upgrades also, and by virtue of starting the project, now brought us under your jurisdiction, and we had the opportunity to meet with Bill. So, yes, so a, as, as you heard, we're removing a substantial portion of pavement over in the northeast side, as you can see. And I'd like to just move a couple things in real quick, A one is the survey prepared by Crest Engineering, it's dated four, three, eighteen, revised through three, fifteen, nineteen. That was submitted. A two is the site plan dated three, twenty-one, nineteen, revised through two, six, twenty, also by Crest. And then lastly, A three is the color rendering of sheet four with the landscaping overlaid on it, and that's revised through two, twenty-seven, twenty. So in reference to what you see, if there is A three, the north section in the back, that's all pavement all the way to concrete. We pulled that all the way down per Bill's suggestion.
How, how many feet is that, that you pulled it down?
Fifteen, it's about fifteen feet. And what's important to note is, is that in order to do the changes for the curved island in the north-south and do the triangle, we will be required to go to the DOT. We've agreed to do that, and Bill agrees that ultimately they have the jurisdiction. If they say it's safe through the way it is and that's how we want it to stay, Bill had indicated he would have, he would accept that. But we're happy to make the application and try for it.
All right, for the record, uh, the exhibits proposed, uh, have been marked for identification, uh, and, Mr. Chair, I suggest that in light of the simplicity of the application, they be, uh, marked into evidence. You concur?
Yes.
And, uh, Ms. Krimko, I'm looking at the comment by Bill saying the applicant and its professionals should be committed for working, cooperating with the board's professional staff. In light of that, do you even want to have any testimony?
I most definitely do not.
Very good, so, uh.
One, may I just ask one question, Sandy?
Sure.
And may I commend you as a professional for moving this along this evening? Um, in the, I, I just want to point it out to the board, in the last sense, we had a lot of discussion with regard to having this landlord be able to get some tenants in there and recognizing that the DOT application could take six to nine months, and Bill did agree that as long as we posted the requisite bonds for the work, he had no problem if the town issued a TCO while we were waiting, and I just wanted to put that on the record and make sure the board's comfortable and that Ron hears it, so. Then it's much easier, right?
And of course, that's not for the board's decision, that's up to a different department, but, uh, it's well said, we appreciate the comment.
Well, it's good to have it out there so the board doesn't get upset if they see things, they don't think that things are.
Uh, based on the comments by, uh, Ms. Krimko, and, Mr. Chair, I suggest that we open this up for, uh, comment or questions of any of the witnesses, uh, from the public.
Are there any witnesses from the public?
Any, uh, members of the public who have questions or comments?
Like to come up and?
All right, for the record, that nobody, uh, in the audience is either raising their hand or coming up, so I would suggest now that we can close the hearing unless Ms. Krimko wants to give a summation.
Absolutely not.
Very good, I suggest that we, uh, have a vote to, uh, end the hearing.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Uh, do we have any tenants for this building, what type of, uh?
Not yet, they, they'd be permitted uses, whether it be retail or office or some mix thereof.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chair.
I, I motion to close.
I second.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to.
No, ask for a motion.
Ask for a motion to, uh.
Let's assume that someone's going to, uh, make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve, based.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Based on?
Our professionals.
Our professionals.
Based on our professional.
Recommendations.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations on the approval, Ms. Krimko, do I seem correct, are you ready to proceed on the final?
I am, as long as you let me switch my files.
Thank you for.
Okay, this brings us to our, our third and final case for the evening, Logan Community LLC.
Well, Ms. Krimko is setting up, uh, you see that there are, uh, a fair number of people in the audience, I know some are associated with the application, who do you have coming forward?
What I can, what I can tell you is, is that everybody here is with the application, save for Donna, Maureen, Claire, who are the neighbors who we have an agreement with, and I believe they're here to speak in favor or not speak at all. So other than that, everybody else is with us.
That's very good to know, all right.
Who we have here tonight is, we have the site engineer, we have the architect, uh, and we have the traffic engineer, and if need be, we have a chavra, which is the name of, the Jewish name, the Hebrew name, of the person who takes care of a body. And why that's important, well, we're setting up, just so the board understands, for the record, Jennifer Krimko, again, on behalf of the applicant, we're here for approval for a funeral home, but we're not here for any funeral home, we're for an Orthodox Jewish funeral home. The reason why that's important is, is that we are seeking a parking variance, uh, because there's ample on-street parking, uh, in front of the English manor. So you'd think, well, what about when there's a wake at night, and what about when there's something on a Saturday and they're having a big party there? Because we're an Orthodox Jewish funeral home, we can stipulate that we have no Saturday funerals at all and no funerals after dark. And that leads to the question, well, summer, it's dark pretty late, well, based on the, and, um, I, I never thought I, the Grave Diggers Association, and when they can or can't bury the bodies, uh, every funeral will be done and there'll be no one on site after four-thirty, except for in the event of a death and they're bringing a body and someone's staying. So that's why it's important that we stipulate that upfront, and that's why you're going to hear about it in Bill's report, because again, there were some engineering issues to be worked through, and we met with Bill and Jim numerous times on this as well, and he was aware of this, and we've agreed upfront that any approval for this parking variance could include a deed restriction to those, excuse me, limited hours to when the funerals would be, so there would be no conflict with the, um, peak time for the English manor.
Good to know, uh, uh, Bill, i- in your report, do you come to any conclusions with regards to parking issues?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with it because that's, 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 uh, townshipal parking, that's not, they're not parking in someone else's parking lot, they're parking in, in a township right of way in townshipal spaces.
Ms. Krimko, when you say stipulation, are you stipulating it based on a, a restriction on a deed?
Yes.
I recommend that.
All right, very good. Uh, uh, just to reconfirm, uh, again, uh, looking around, I, I do see people are directly, uh.
They're with us.
Yeah, and we just had one couple, and these young folks over here, they're probably with you, right, Ms. Krimko?
Well, they're from, they're from Dynamic Engineering.
They're dynamic people?
They are dynamic, I haven't met them, but they appear to be dynamic.
All right. And the reason why I emphasize that again, in light of the fact that you have no opposition here, and you have six proposed witnesses, are you planning to shorten your testimony?
I am, I, what I was hoping to do was give a very quick summary of what we're proposing, have the site engineer answer any questions, the architect is here to answer any questions. But again, the, the, the variances are all related to environmental constraints on the property and some existing conditions in the weird shape of the lot. And what I also.
Are any issues addressed by, uh, Bill or Jim?
Yeah, they're all addressed, and I can tell you that we can agree to comply with everything in their letters.
Good, I would suggest, uh, Mr. Chair, that we now have, uh, Mr. Higgins.
Mr. Higgins?
And, uh, our secretary has marked the package as B one, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I will summarize again, um, it's a two point six one acre through lot between thirty-five and thirty-one, as you know. It's currently occupied by a building that's set within the front yard setback on Route thirty-five, and it's a standard building in the front, and the rear is basically described as a quonzie hut. It's an old building, it's, it's not, not very attractive. The variances, I'll summarize the variances, they need one for, from the, uh, from changing the elevation more than two feet. There's one small area where it changes three feet, I don't have a real concern with that. Trash recyclable material storage areas are required, I couldn't see any on the plans, so they just need to address that, what they're going to do, I'm sure that they do have a plan for it.
Right, and I can just stipulate to it, there is no real trash, um, creation that would need a dumpster recyclable. What we're proposing to do is just have cans in the back of the building, and we could certainly put a fence around it, subject to your approval.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine. Um, the freestanding sign setback and location, it's supposed to be setback fifteen feet from the front property line, and it's supposed to be located on the upstream portion of Route thirty-five, meaning before the driveway. It's located ten feet from the property line and on the opposite side of the driveway. I suggest that if they moved to the upstream part of the driveway, and if they want to testify on, for variance on the setback, it's a very small sign, it's a, it's a monument sign. It can be setback fifteen feet, but I'm not recommending that, and I'm not recommending it be granted either, I think they, they need to provide a little bit of test.
And, and I think that the applicant's position is the sign is really just to identify the location, it's obviously not for advertising purposes. Um, so we kept it small to keep it in, in concert with the architectural design of the building, we want people to be able to, people to be able to see it. So we're happy to move it to the other side, we would just ask that we keep it at the proposed location.
Do you have some example that's not so, I mean, this looks like my six-year-old written, wrote all over, I mean, do you have something that's, I can't even find a sign.
You have a board that we can see?
Yeah, we do, I, I was following the pace of, that was being set for me.
I get it, I just, I, as you're talking about signs, I don't even.
I didn't move anything in yet.
Okay.
I, I planned on moving all these items in.
I, I think, look, for, let's just look at the, uh, the sign, because the site is a little hard to really.
Why don't I have Mr. Shara sworn in real quick, so you can just answer the questions.
Sharon, would you raise your right hand, please, to profess, tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but truth, hope you got it?
I do.
Name for the record?
Matthew Shara, and I'm here.
You're a licensed professional engineer, State New Jersey?
Oh, yeah.
And you've been accepted as an expert before numerous boards throughout the state?
Throughout the state.
You'd submit him as an expert unless court is an injection.
I suggest that he be accepted. Accepted.
Matt, grab that microphone and point out for Mr. Duffy and the other members of the board where the proposed sign is currently.
So the.
I'm sorry, let's, A one is the survey.
Are all these documents?
They're all filed, correct. A one is the survey revised, uh, through ten eleven eighteen. A two is the site plan, excuse me, prepar, also prepared by Dynamic, revised through two, six, twenty.
That's much better.
Yeah.
A three are the architectural plans, prepared by MMA Architects, dated five, fif, five, ten, nineteen. And now A four is a color rendered site plan, and that's for.
Is a portion of what's already been supplied?
Correct, there was, there was one minor change as to a canopy that he can talk. Correct, there was, there was one minor change as to a canopy that he can talk about, there's no impact on anything related to the zoning.
And just for the record, I assume, Jim, Bill, you have no problem with marking into evidence any of these particular exhibits?
No.
Right, so, Mr. Chair, I suggest that they be marked into evidence?
Mark them into evidence.
Ms. Krimko?
So, Matt, just briefly, where is the existing sign, where is the proposed sign?
Short, so there is no existing sign?
I'm sorry, where is it proposed now versus where we agreeing to propose?
So the, the proposed sign, as part of the application, was on the north side of the driveway. This, Route 35 is along the bottom of the page, just for, for orientation purposes. We're proposing the driveway, a single driveway off of Route 35. There's a sign on the north side of that, between the driveway and the Accuridealer. So we're gonna propose it on the other side, the downstream side.
And we don't wanna move it back 15 feet, because we want it to be visible?
You, you do want it to be visible, this, the building next, next door to the south, I believe it's a commercial office use. It's pretty, it's one of those buildings that's right up against the highway, so you kinda, you, you want that, that, you know, that, that setback to be a little further, or a little closer to that right-of-way. So you can see it as you approach the site. And it is, it is a narrow lot, so, you know, coming up against that, up to the site, you have that building to the south, you do wanna see that sign as you enter.
And is there gonna be another sign, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, on Logan Road at all?
No.
There's not one proposed.
No, and just so the board understands.
Can somebody explain kinda what you're thinking?
Right, so just, yeah, so, just so the board understands operationally. As proposed, and we've agreed to this as part of the, as, as part of the tech review, well, a majority of the parking is for the, a majority of the parking is backed by Logan Road. When the funeral home is not serving a funeral, that has a gated, that is gated and locked on Logan Road. So this can never be used as a cut-through for people to avoid and to go through, and it would only be open at that time. And the board can also see, there's lots of green on the south side and not so much green on the north side. The reason for that is there's flood hazard area and riparian zone, and it's constrained, and we had to go to the DEP actually, and we're not able to develop there. So we had to get creative, which is why it brings me to the Claire's who are in the audience. I, they were kind enough to speak with me numerous times, meet with me, go over the plans, and go back and forth with regard to some changes. I wanted to stipulate on the record, as I promised that I would, to a couple of things. We're proposing to, we're proposing a new fence along this property line, up against their home. By doing that, it's gonna change the fencing of their yard. We've agreed to replace all of their fencing to match this fence. Originally, when Maureen and Don and I met, it was decided that they wanted a black chain link fence with black slats. When I spoke to Don this afternoon, it seems Maureen changed her mind, and she wasn't sure, and she might want, oh, you lied, it was you? That it, right, that it might be estate fencing that they wanted. So what we would stipulate to, we'll work it out with the Claire's, it'll be something that conforms with your ordinance as it relates to the type of fence, and it'll be subject to their approval. Couple other things, we originally had deciduous flower, deciduous trees that could potentially drop leaves into their pool. We agreed to make them all evergreen trees that don't shed. We took Mr. Higgins's recommendation for the type of tree there. Originally, when the pool went in, there may be some wires crossed over onto our property line. We agreed that we would relocate them back onto their property line at the time of construction. There's a very large walnut tree here, we're giving them the right of first refusal to come and harvest the wood from it when it comes down. And we agreed not to block their site distance, which Bill Fitzgerald would never let us do anyway.
Right, Ms. Krimko, based on what you just commented in your relationship, on your comments with the Claire's, is any of that in any document?
Yes, it's all on the plans, actually. There's, there's no.
Revised plans reflect all this?
Yeah, there, there's notes on the plans to, even to the walnut tree, are on the plans.
So if I could do something a little unusual, since the Claire's are here, can you affirm that, like, Ms. Krimko stated is correct? And since you're, I'm gonna ask your comment, your, your comments would be under oath, do you understand that? Basically, oath that everybody else is going through?
Yes, I understand. My name's Don Claire, and my wife Maureen, and yes, that's accurate. We did go over a number of items, and a list was created, and everything's been agreed to, and everybody's been very, very helpful professionals, as well as the applicant, so.
Anything else you want?
Can I ask a question there? As far as what was agreed to, were the specific varieties of plants along the fence agreed to? Because my, my concerns are that they're deer food.
They are.
Not the leland.
They don't, yeah, the ones, the one type they don't seem to go after.
Leland cypress will grow very wide.
Right, they would be too big. One of the things that we talked about is, Bill, Jim had made some suggestions. I'm happy to say whatever those trees would be subject to Jim's decision, and he could talk to you guys and make sure you're okay with them also.
Yeah, my suggestion would be columnar hollies that won't spread out, they'll grow up, they'll be evergreens.
And they don't have barriers that are gonna fall in your yard, I already asked them that.
So if the habitation is granted, I suggest that with regards to those trees, that they be subject to approval by the Claire's, and approval by Mr. Higgins after consultation with the Claire's, is that fair?
We're comfortable with that.
Ms. Krimko, is that fair?
Of course.
Alright, very good.
I do have a question, how many parking spaces are in the property here?
So, Matt Sharrow, referring to A4, exhibit A4, there's 130 parking spaces on-site.
I think we need to talk about some things. I know we're kinda.
We haven't gotten.
A little out of line on. One of the things we need is a dedication of a right-of-way, either out-and-out grant or an easement along Logan Road, because the halfway to Logan Road against the property is not 25 feet. In fact, the deed, I believe, runs to the center line.
Okay, Ms. Fitzgerald, what, this is what I should, I would suggest to the chair. So, Mr. Higgins, you're done with your report?
Well, there's, there's a number of points in my report, I can summarize them very quickly.
Sure.
Okay, okay, so go through. Curved landscaped islands, they have two four-foot wide curved landscaped islands in the front yard facing Route 35. My suggestion was that they eliminate, they create a 13-foot landscaped island closest to Route 35. That would eliminate two parking spaces, dropping the number of parking spaces down to, was it 128 or 118, I feel?
128.
128. And put a substantial landscaped area in there with some trees, and then leave the four-foot landscaped island further back, but at least as it stood from Route 35 would be okay.
For the record, Ms. Krimko has indicated that there's a stipulation to that suggestion.
Yes.
There's a variance for parking in the front yard, because the required 25-foot landscaped areas aren't provided. The buffer isn't provided, that's required, and the landscaped area on the northern property line is narrower. And when, you don't meet any one of those things, the ordinance doesn't permit parking in the front yard. I don't have a big problem with that, but I do think they have to beef up the landscaping in the front yard.
Ms. Krimko?
We agree, whatever Jim wants, by way of landscaping.
And then the minimum landscaped area required.
Any approval would be subject to full approval by Ms. Higgins.
With, with regard to the minimum landscaped area required on the whole site and in the front yard, it's, the applicant's provided some figures for that. When I did my report, I didn't have those figures, but they don't take into account Logan Road and what, what kind of additional right-of-way might be dedicated there. So I can't, I can't give you numbers on those.
We're gonna comply, are we talking about tree removal?
No, we're talking about percent landscaping on site and on.
Right, so, just to go back to what Bill had raised initially, we're happy, he's correct, that our deed does run to the center line of Logan Road. We're happy to dedicate that right-of-way. That will actually reduce how much land we have in the front yard setback, so I think that.
Yeah, that's, you have much landscaping in the front yard setback, so we don't know what those figures are, so I can't really advise.
The landscaping will be there, it just, some of it, our street trees, or some of it will actually be in the town's right-of-way.
Your only escape is gonna be in the town's right-of-way.
What?
Well, we can move it back, I mean, if the curb.
How much room do you have?
How much room do you have?
Not much.
We could do it by way of an easement, and then it.
It's the same, the ordinance treats it the same way, that's why I'm telling you the best thing to do, it's your choice.
You have about 14 feet from the property line to our first curb line on-site.
After the dedication?
Yes.
Oh, so we can move it back.
What you're suggesting, Mr. Fitzgerald?
So, that's up to the board, what's required, Jim, 25?
25, I think.
So if there's 14, that's a board decision, but I'm suggesting that their landscaping be within whatever that area is.
That's fine.
Because it just, it gets damaged when guys are plowing, there has to be a place in the right way to put snow.
Yeah, we have to have the 10 feet, that's why, that's why we have the requirement of 10 feet being sawed only from the curb back. From the curb back, you have to have 10 feet of landscaping, it can only be sawed.
Everybody on the board comfortable with that concept?
We would actually, we would move the tree right, if I may.
There's a lot going on on this site, so.
Right now, our property line goes to here, which is right in the middle of the street. And our curbing comes out to here, and the trees were here. In order to give the town its 25-foot right-of-way, we're gonna move our property line to 14 feet from where the parking is. And what we're proposing to do is, we'll move these trees out of what will then be the town's right-of-way, and into that area between our property line and the.
It's about this parking space.
Right, and the parking space. We will need a variance for not having the full 25 feet of landscaped area in a front yard, because now we're reducing our front yard significantly. I think that was what we're talking about.
Yes, yes.
And since you had the regular announcement in your notice, any other variants?
When you speak of this landscaped island that you wanna combine, is it the one on 35 or Logan?
Yes, it's one on 35. They comply on the Logan side with that requirement, but they don't comply.
After we give, after we give them the variance for the setback.
That has nothing to do with the islands in the parking area.
So you want this island here to be bigger?
Yes, that's correct.
This island, when you're.
Do we have, do we have individual?
This wasn't. Yeah, that's on the plans, it just has colors, it's covered.
Well, that isn't even close to what we got.
Yeah, it's exactly what you got.
No.
No.
We gave it 20 sets, 16 sets in the full size.
This is what we got, this is what we were getting.
No, 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 you got full sets.
We have full sets, well. In any event, it's, it's not.
Nobody's blaming you.
I know.
Just so you know, we just, you know.
So this is.
This is a much better rendering.
In the future, now that I know that you get the reduced sets, I can bring 11 by 17ths of these color renderings in the future, I'm happy to do it.
So he's suggesting, what is he suggesting?
We lose these two spots and we make this a bigger island.
Can you move, can you move back so we can see that?
You wanted this island to take up those two spots.
That's correct.
And what, what is the reason for that?
Your ordinance requires a certain island.
Oh, Jen, show them down here, I'm not sure.
Who knew?
You get that one on almost every site.
I'm more concerned about the amount of trees that are being removed from this property.
That's why.
I normally am, that's right.
Any court members have any other questions about the immediate issue discussed?
I have a question about parking. Can I do that now? So what happens when we exceed the 130-some-odd parking spots and we have a really, really big funeral? Where's the overflow going to go?
Actually, that's, there is all the existing parking that's on the street in front of English Manor.
And how much is that? How many spots are that?
We know that there's an excess based on what their proposed use is on their size, and what their requirement is, not what they use a requirement, there's an excess of at least 44 spaces if they were maxed out. However, what we offered at the beginning was, because of the deed restriction, our funerals are going to take place in complimentary times as when their peak hours would be. We have no nighttime, we have no Saturday. So most of those spots will all be open at all times.
Are we talking about the V that's in front of?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So essentially, you can use the English Manor's parking?
All right, let's, no, it's not the English Manor's parking.
It's the township's parking.
Okay.
They use the township's parking.
So, Ms. Krimko, just to be clear, because you said it nighttime, but the beginning of your comments about the stipulation.
4:30. 4:30, I apologize. If I could, move in as A5, an aerial? I mean, I was prepared to present all of this by way of all the witnesses, I'm happy to do it this way also. A5 is the aerial, and if you could point out where we're talking about the parking?
Sure, so it's a proposed aerial overlay exhibit A5. It's the aerial, that's part of the site plan packet, and then we overlaid our render over top of where the site is. But we wanted to also show the English Manor site and that V parking, as you would, as you would say. English Lane is, I would say, the south side that comes up, comes up towards the English Manor building is off-site here. Then Dorset Lane, I believe, or Dorset Drive, comes down and creates that V with the gazebo in the middle lawn area. So that's, that happens to be all public right-of-way and public parking.
And that's 84 spots.
84 parking spaces.
You're only short by 20.
And then.
Just to be clear, because we have to pick up the record too, you pointed at a portion of the V. Would you more graphically describe which section?
Sure, so, so as you come off Logan Road, you're gonna turn onto English Lane. English Lane runs southwest or southeast towards the English Manor building. That whole roadway is public right-of-way, and there's parking spaces along there that are striped. Then as you get to the notch of the V, where the building of English Manor is at the, the south side of that, you can make the left to head back northwest towards, towards Logan, towards Logan Road. And that's another public right-of-way with park, public parking on it. And then just to the east of that, there is actually a private parking, parking lot for English Manor itself, which has 27 parking spaces.
I would say nobody's gonna be parking on Logan Road on their street.
Nobody's gonna be parking on Logan Road, they would use these two roadways, public parking.
No, 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 timeout.
I can't tell you how people are going to do things. What I can tell you is, all of our.
Jim, can people park on Logan Road there? Let's just start there. Like, will the town allow?
I'm trying, I'm.
I know you're gonna say no, because.
No, 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 I'm not.
Oh, you're not?
You don't know what I'm gonna say, that, that actually isn't what I was gonna say.
People can park on.
What I was going to say is, we don't have control where people park. I can't say if the Claire's have a party that their friends can't park on Logan Road. So again, I don't know if there's a restriction or not, it's the governing body's decision as to whether or not they can park on Logan Road. Right, but what I was going to offer was, we're deficient 20 parking spots, okay? That's the only variance we need is for the 20 parking spots as it relates to the number of spots. There are 87 on-street parking spaces available to us to mitigate that variance. The ordinance requires us to have 20 more than we have, there's 87 more on the street. So we meet the ordinance requirement as it relates to parking with that public parking. Whether someone parks on the street or doesn't, I can't answer that. If the governing body doesn't want parking on Logan Road, then they can put that into effect.
So, so the point being, so they, I guess we, we don't know whether or not we're allowed to park on Logan Road or not?
I don't thi, I think you can.
You can.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any posted signs.
Don Claire says you can.
I, yeah, I have friends that live on Logan.
It would be ridiculous to do it. My, well, my concern is where you're going, you know, it's dangerous to do it, so.
So the thing that.
That part, past Sunset, where this is, the other, on the other side of Sunset, you can't park.
So, my issue with you saying that the people are gonna be parking and using your site is safety. Because coming off of Route 35 and cutting through Logan Road, which a lot of us have done, people are flying through there.
We're gonna have.
So what are you, what are you offering in terms of crosswalk?
I'm so glad you asked that question, Mr. Di Benedetto, Dr. Di Benedetto. We're actually going to have, not unlike how you see for the high holidays at Temple Beth Toriel on Monmouth Road, how there's either an off-duty or an on-duty police officer at any big funerals where there's gonna be parking across English, across Logan Road and in, in that public parking, we would agree to any condition that we have a, whether it be an off-duty or an on-duty police officer, someone who's.
So that would help with the, that would also help with the parking.
Right, correct. Who, someone who's able to manage the traffic.
And then how, and then how does the traffic get managed? That's my other question. So now you have a lot of people who've now congregated here at a certain time, I understand the times are better than not doing it at 5 o'clock. However, when you have a rush of 200, let's say, cars, are they exiting now out on Logan Road to, to all leave? Is it?
Yes, I.
To be completely honest, is there a procession?
No, so I can, I can answer that for you.
Let's just start there.
Okay, so, the funeral lasts about an hour, an hour and a half. Everybody comes at once.
Okay.
Everybody leaves at once, there's no wake, there's no visiting hours, and none of that. There is no large majority of people that go by way of a procession to the cemetery, only the family and very. There is no large majority of people that go by way of a procession to the cemetery, only the family and very close relatives go to the cemetery. There's no procession. So it's likely that those cars that are in the parking lot would leave on Route thirty-five and those cars that are in English Manor would leave on Logan Road. I will point out, and I think what's, what's important, important, not important, it's interesting and, and, you know, when I, when I told the Claires what could go here, but as a matter of right, as opposed to what it is where it's really not a lot of activity, almost very little activity. Everything from retail, twenty-four hour restaurants, a diner, um, a convenience store and gas station, a car wash, a daycare center, um, a synagogue, I, I, I mean, there's so many high intense uses that could go here, so I understand that it.
Sure.
It is all at once, but it's one time a day and it's not during peak hours.
I just was imagining a procession of people running out and now jamming up two major inner thoroughfares of our community.
Are we, um, can, can I see that rendering a little bit better on the Logan side? Because I have some questions about Logan.
What that characterization is that, is that for that period of time, all at once, that, that area is.
No, no, no question, no question, but again, it's, it's, I should, I, I think it was a fair characterization because, yes, as I indicated, it is all at once, but at the same time, it's a permitted use, so it would be all at once whether we had the parking variance or not for twenty. And I think that the fact that we don't have it at night, it's never going to interfere with peak hours on the roadway. So the roadways are not going to be at their max capacity at the time. And with a convenience store or a restaurant or something that's a lot more high turnover, you have a lot more traffic on an all-day basis.
Let me just clarify, you said at night again, but it's four thirty.
Four thirty, I apologize.
So.
Nighttime in the winter.
So can you explain a little bit more about, um, the area that cannot be developed? And, and how you decided to put the driveway so far to, I guess that would be the east, northeast of Logan.
Sure, so, um, you can probably see it better on A five. There is a tributary to Deal Lake that runs under thirty-five between our property and the southern property. That's actually piped right now, it was recent, I, I don't know the year it was piped, but it was recently piped. Um, and then that empties out at the corner and runs south between our property and the, um, Range Rover dealership. And that's open there, so there's no piping, it's an open stream tributary. That runs down along the whole southern, or, or whole western property line to Logan Road, underneath Logan Road, and then through the woods here. Um, so that is the environmental constraint that we're talking about.
Can you just explain what that means though, it's a flood hazard area, what, what are we restricted by?
Yep, so you're, you have basically three things, uh, associated with this, this tributary. First is the flood hazard area, um, second is the floodway, so this is a mapped stream, so that has an actual fl- area along the stream that you can't do anything within. Um, you have a flood hazard area that is dedicated, uh, depicted by elevations to that area. So that would follow an elevation through here, and that's why you have this open green space here, because that's, it's predicated by, by a elevation.
So explain to me why the Land Rover dealership is like right up against the stream and you've got this gigantic buffer on that side.
Developed before the regs.
It was developed before the regulations.
So they don't, okay, well, that, that's a, that explains that.
So, so that's why we have this, along this western property line, we have that big portion of green here, this is actually in a floodway, so this buildable area, um, where the parking lot is, is basically maxed out. And then same thing as you come along here.
What's the actual width that you have to stay away from the stream?
It, it varies, it varies throughout the whole, the entire area, it goes by the floodway, so the floodway's mapped, so I, I could probably give you an approximate, so.
So it's different in every area?
Yes.
Based on what, the stream?
Top of bank, usually it is relative to the top of bank is.
Based on top bank.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it must be wider at the end of the property closer to, to Logan.
And we can't fill it, we can't drive on it, we can't do anything.
It's all the, this is the same set of jur- of outside agency jurisdiction as Deal thirty-five that we saw, where the NEP is going to have to verify the flood hazard elevation where it falls on the property, and then they'll look at their stormwater management because it's discharged right into it, so it's the same set of.
So, so what, let's get back on track, can we get Mr. Higgins to finish up? And then Mr. Fitzgerald to tell us what's going on, and then we can take it from there.
What page are we on, Mr. Higgins?
We are at page four.
Where?
Okay, but I'll do, I'll just, I'll just hit the ones that I have concerns with. Landscape area along the public streets we touched on, I think they need to provide the ten feet of sod from the, uh, front property line back on both streets.
That's stipulated too?
The buffer we discussed, required buffer, it's twenty-five feet required, they're proposing a ten-foot buffer adjacent to the residential property to the north, and we're gonna have discussions as to what kind of plantings to put in that buffer that aren't gonna interfere with a neighbor's property, but are gonna give them adequate screening. The design waivers, it's not, it doesn't indicate whether there'll be sod or seed, and I think that, uh, the grass areas in this location should all be sod. Should be an underground sprinkler system.
Agreed.
And the tree location and preservation plan, uh, when they compared their plans, they didn't understand that the shrubs they were planting in the buffer area weren't trees and didn't count. So they thought they met the requirement, it turns out they require additional twenty-seven trees. I think a large number of that number of trees can be provided if we have the columnar hollies that I was talking about there, because they will be counted as trees.
We're gonna meet your ordinance, so either we're gonna plant the trees per built, per Jim's direction, or we'll pay into the tree fund.
Okay, street trees, addition, some additional street trees are needed on both streets.
Fine.
And then the only other issue I had is the calculations for building an impervious coverage all depend upon, uh, the, the amount of wetlands and I think, and, and flood, flood, uh, areas, flood hazard areas, which I, they provided some figures to me today. They also don't take into account what's gonna happen with the, with the right-of-way on Logan Road. So we, we're still.
We're still okay though, we're still, we still don't need a variance.
I'm, I'm guessing you don't, but, you know, we can't be certain.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Higgins isn't sure, we're ha- we had the applicant saying that there's no variance needed. Do we have a meeting of minds on that, uh, tonight?
Yeah.
Mr. Higgins? Uh, I, I'm trying to think of the, the, the challenge, uh, whether or not we need to go through variance testimony, because the applicant says no variance is needed.
What I, what I can offer is that if a variance is needed for impervious or building coverage, it's only a function of the ordinance and the subtraction of the environmentally sensitive areas. But for those environmentally sensitive areas, we're well under the building and lot coverage, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And based on your calculations, even with the dedication of the right-of-way, it's your opinion that we're still within those parameters?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Higgins, do you have any comments on that?
No, I think that's fine, but I, I don't think you can approve something when you don't have the figures in front of you, that's, that's the problem. The concept, the concept is fine, I think you can take notice that, that the concept is fine and maybe, uh, give direction in a way if you're comfortable Sandy, doing a positive resolution based on plans being submitted prior to the next hearing that tie those numbers down.
Well, but, but if we don't need a variance.
But you don't, I don't know that, that's the thing, I, I suspect you don't, but I don't know that. And as far as the, um, variances for landscaping in the front yard percentage and stuff, we don't know that now.
So this is what I suggest, that if the board wants to, uh, grant approval tonight, it would be subject to, uh, approving to Mr. Higgins between now and the next meeting that no variance is needed. And if the variance is needed, we have to reopen the hearing?
I think what, I think what, what, I, I think what I heard Jim say was that we need to provide numbers to him so you know exactly what you're granting, if you're gonna grant it. So his suggestion would be to authorize you to bring a resolution to the next meeting, between now and then, we would get you those numbers. So when the board voted, they could, I think that's what you were saying.
As long as you're comfortable with that, Sandy.
Yeah, but i- if the figures, uh, don't satisfy you.
Yes.
That, the, does that not mean that a variance is required?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and, um, we don't have any, uh.
So you have to open a public hearing for testimony on that issue.
Right.
I, I think we, yes, that's fine, I mean, I think that there was ample testimony and I just support variances to either of those. Because we know that we need a variance for landscaping in the front yard by virtue of the fact that we're dedicating the twenty-five feet. So that was already there, but again, that's fine, if you wanna leave it open, I'm happy to leave it open.
I think that's, that's why I said what I did before, because it seems like Mr. Higgins would be much more comfortable if we do it that way.
And Bill pointed something out to me to the, to, just now that I didn't realize, is that on the Route thirty-five side.
Oh, Logan Road side.
On Logan Road side, there's only fourteen feet of landscaping available. So that if you require ten feet of that to be sawed, then you, you only have four feet of actual landscaped area, so you may wanna grant some relief in that regard, it would be, I would say.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that the only thing going there were the street trees, so it would just be.
You gotta put, I mean, you got only fourteen foot setbacks, so you gotta break the balance.
Right, I, I didn't know the street, I didn't know it had to be ten feet in front of it, I thought it just, so we would ask that we allow to be plant our street trees within the sodded area.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any, uh, board members have any questions?
Oh, I have tons of questions.
Just on the safety one, I'm not sure we agree, we agree that every time there is a funeral, that there will be.
Yes.
Every time.
Every time that there'll be a funeral where there's parking in English Lane, there would be someone there to cross, yes.
Wait a second, so how are we gonna determine that? That's pretty tough, I think.
Yeah, so.
And while, uh, your client is going to talk to another client, I suppose.
So your architect.
Got it, so, uh, some time ago, you were talking about eighty-seven spaces that was on street, was the term.
Yes.
Are those eighty-seven slots the ones that are part of the V or?
Yes.
All right, so that, they wouldn't be on street, would they, wouldn't they be, they would be part of the public parking lot?
No, it's not a public parking lot, it's the public right-of-way, it's on the street, just happens to be lined.
So that's actually a street there, okay, very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, but I, I'm gonna say, I would not be comfortable just saying, okay, let's see if there, if it overflows to the other side. I think if you have a, I think every time there's a, okay, you gotta have somebody there.
And, and who do you think would be that type of person, would it have to be an off, dirty, off-duty, uh, a public police officer or?
Well, I mean, I have concerns, I mean, I, well, there's gonna need to be some type of crosswalk developed on that piece, on Logan Road. So just by saying someone's gonna be there doesn't mean they're gonna be there. So how does, how do, who?
And also, and also they have to be corralled in so I'd like to be.
Put a crosswalk there and sign it appropriately.
Right, and I also would like, I would like no right, uh, no left-hand turn out of that parking lot onto Logan Road, because that Logan Road, as you go further towards, uh, Sunset, it gets very narrow and there are people parking on that street on both sides. And I know for a fact that it's gonna, if there's a, people leaving there, it's gonna be a mess. And I do not want those cars, those cars should be all vacating to thirty-five, period. So I don't know how we would mitigate that, that's another issue that I think this site.
Well.
Well, I don't, wait, 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 I'd indicated that they won't be leaving from Logan Road, that they would be leaving on thirty-five.
How are you gonna do that?
We have a gate.
If I'm in that parking lot, I may wanna go out to Logan Road, but then.
If you're not gonna gate at a funeral. You, you can't have a parking lot full of cars there and then gate everybody in so they have to go the other way in the middle of a funeral, that's not gonna work.
So, Ms. Krimko, um, I, I know you were conferring with your client, so.
No, I heard, their concern was about left turn on Logan Road.
Right, you stipulate that?
Yeah.
Well, you can put a geometric driveway in that helps a little bit, just, you know, put the soft right turn in.
Are you suggesting that in addition to a no-left turn or in lieu of a?
Well, no, if you, you can have a driveway that has an in-movement and a small island that makes it tough, that everything. You can't force it physically to the nth degree, but you can encourage strongly a right turn out of Logan out of there.
Are you suggesting that instead of a no-left turn?
Well, it's gonna, it doesn't seem like, you have a signs as no-left, you have curved geometry that, that encourage you to make the right.
I just wanna make sure.
Correct.
Well, yeah.
Does that satisfy you, Dr. Di Benedetto?
Well, I think that, that would definitely make it better for, you know, having the traffic go out that way, I agree, that satisfies that. But I'm also concerned about having crosswalk and.
We can look at the.
And the number of spaces that you are, your issue is that you have a lack of space, how, how?
Twenty.
Twenty, and so, um, I think that the site is under landscaped also, so, I mean, so if, if I force myself onto the project and say I need more trees or we need to put more landscaping, that could mitigate some more spots. And so now that creates another issue. So I'm just a little concerned with the project, I, overall, I mean, I think that it's a nice idea, but I'm concerned about safety on Logan Road, that, that, that you're taking down a ton of trees and, um, and then you have these issues with the parking.
Couple of things. What I intended to do was come in and go through the whole thing, and this has been somewhat haphazard and unlike how I normally present.
Yes.
As you're aware.
Yeah.
What I can tell you is, is that we have a site that has extreme, um, constraints on it. And as a result, we have a hardship. Um, but for those constraints, this would all fit. Because of this community and because of the, um, low number of funerals, this is not a Fury Funeral Home or there, or, or one of the bigger funeral homes where there's a funeral every day. We're talking about maybe one, two, three a month. And it's only one on a given day as opposed to oftentimes.
I don't know that you could talk about volume, because you said that today, but, you know, our, we're charged with looking over the last.
Historically, I can tell you over the last twenty years, historically, that's how it's been.
But as more members of the community move in, I would assume that more members of the community will also use the funeral home. So I don't know how you can say that there isn't gonna be more tomorrow as there is today.
There might be, there probably will be, I would say. But again, we don't have a use where you have the wake and you have the visiting, you have the funeral, everybody comes and everybody leaves. I, as far as the trees, no matter what use goes here, you have a tree ordinance, the trees would be coming down. A large percentage of trees are being saved because of these environmental constraints.
I understand, but normally we would put the trees on what, the residential side, and you're not doing that here. And so that's my issue, so these fine people here are saying they agree with it. They're not gonna be here forever, there's gonna be someone else who's gonna move into that area and it's gonna be right up against a parking lot, and they may not.
We are putting trees, it's, it's, we're asking for ten feet instead of twenty-five.
Right.
And the density with which we're lining it is probably a greater, a, a greater visual barrier than would be if the whole twenty-five.
Are they asking for a variance?
Yeah, yeah, this was.
So this is another variance?
Correct.
So I thought you said you had no variances, except for the, just the parking.
I said as it relates to the number of parking, no, we have a whole list of variances that you just went through.
No, we, we didn't get a chance to go through our reports in a normal order, having said that, that was my first, you know, we're stopping here kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Because this is not a, I agree with you to a point. There's a residence lawfully existing, and now this commercial is coming in lawfully, except that they need a variance for that buffer. So that's where we stopped and, and tried to get the two parties talking, cause I didn't think it was appropriate. Going down the road, once if they leave, whoever comes in sees what's there. This gets imposed on who's there after the fact, so I saw that as a little bit different than you were looking at it. Anyone that's coming later gets to at least see what's there and they can say, well, I, you know, that's too close for me.
Hello, the nice new fencing.
And the nice new fencing, that's right, maybe they don't like the color.
No, but what, just going back to A five, when you say that a ton of trees are coming down, if you look, there's trees along the boundary here, which we can't touch because they're up against, they're all within that flood hazard area, so this is all not being touched. This is all cleared, the whole center of the site is all cleared already, so it's not.
That's not what I'm seeing on Google Maps.
Again, so putting that aside, when you look at the variance proofs as to do we have a hardship? There's no question that we have a hardship by virtue of the environmental constraints in order to meet the strict enforcement of the ordinance.
I don't think, yes.
I, I'm just curious, what was on the property, was that the old ABC tool rental years ago?
No.
No?
You're not, you're not, what was the use of it?
No, I was wrong, I was talking about the plaza that earlier, it's actually down.
Yeah, but that's, but that's not their problem.
There's a residential building in the front and a residence on Logan Road.
Okay.
What?
You're not allowed to look at outside sources during a hearing and talk about it during a hearing, just to keep.
Uh, well, I, I feel like we're inadequate, the, the information that we are looking at is, we can't see. I mean, I don't, I, I can't, what I have in front of me is not, um, adequate enough. I mean, I don't, I, I can't, what I have in front of me is not, um, adequate enough to render a decision.
Eight-six is an aerial?
I, I can't see from this.
Matt, this aerial was down on, what's the date of the survey?
March two thousand, or, March and May two thousand fifteen.
Can I ask Matt a question while you're?
Yeah.
What, what environmental stuff has you nailed down? Have you got the LOI for freshwater?
Yes. Yep, you have it.
And the verification plan?
Yes, you have it.
So, as I'm looking at that aerial, it looks like, so we're talking about moving a lot of pedestrian traffic here as well, across a major road. So we're talking about having some sort of, um, walkway properly, you know, signed sort of situation. We've talked about having a police officer there. Where is, where are the sidewalks for people to then maneuver in this area? Because it looks like there isn't any sort of sidewalks on the Logan side.
Can I make a suggestion? I'd like to introduce my traffic engineer. I mean, again, uh, this wasn't how I planned this evening's ago. I was following the direction that was coming from the dais, but it sounds to me like you need to hear from my traffic engineer. You're calling it a major road. Well, there might be quick traffic coming there. I don't know that it would qualify as a major road. That being said, I think he can answer a lot of the questions you're talking about.
There's a lot more traffic than Jerome Smith Drive, I can tell you that much, so.
A hundred percent true.
That's, that's.
Before we get there, can we talk about, a little bit more about the, the trees?
Yeah, I have questions too.
Before we switch over.
This is what I suggested. We talked about normal, uh, but of course, the last two applications, they're pretty simple. Obviously, this is much more complicated. I suggest, because the chair and I have been talking about this. Let's just have Jim, as he normally would do, finish up in his report, and then we hear Bill's report. And then Ms. Krimko, she knows, she has a special sensitivity now to some of the concerns from the board, and you can present your case in normal fashion. Mr. Chair, uh, what do you think?
I agree with that. So Mr. Higgins, if you're finished, are you?
Yes, I'm finished, yeah.
And let's go to Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll try to summarize so you can get back to the action. Uh, report dated February twenty-ninth. So the first item of concern that I'll talk to you about, at number three, they've already agreed to the right-of-way dedication. Doesn't matter to me whether it's an outnet dedication of land or an easement. Ordinance treats them the same way. Item number five, uh, they do need variances with regard to a lot of things. One of them was the buffer, as I discussed, against the existing residents to the north. That needs a variance. Uh, item number nine, uh, DEP reviews will be required of the flood hazard area and the stormwater management because it discharges directly into it. Item number ten, the current stormwater plan on the site plan that you have is not finished in design because it came apparent as we worked through some technical reviews that it could be economized and, and much more efficient. And so they're working through that. Having said that, they have to comply with township requirements, they have to comply with state requirements. And both of us, state and myself, will review it. I know I had the state today, uh, not with us, but talking to the fellow that does the review. Item fifteen is the most important one to me because it's something a little bit different. So if I can, maybe everybody could go there.
Guys, guys, can we have Bill's attention, please?
You want me to take that back?
No, I'm holding so everyone can see it.
I thought you were hiding from Bill.
Oh, I can see Bill.
Alright, so the lighting and illumination plan is a concern to me because we don't know where the future's going. So, given the restrictions that we talked about, and, and then they're, they're in item D of, or paragraph D of this, I'm fifteen, uh, with the four-thirty at the latest operation, other than small security around a building. I think there still needs to be a lighting plan that meets the ordinance requirement. Okay, so what I, I'll summarize. What I said to us, they need to develop a plan that meets the ordinance requirement as to illumination levels, pole heights, et cetera, because we restrict pole heights, uh, in the proximity of a residentially zoned or, or occupied property. But I'm gonna recommend that the parking, that the lighting is green banked, just like we do parking, by a deed, by an approval, by a deed restriction, et cetera. I'm also recommending that the conduit be put in at this stage, at the early stage, if it's approved, so that pavement doesn't have to get torn up in the future. The conduit's only plastic piping, inch, inch and a half. It's all in the right spots. They, if they need to put a lighting plan in the future, they can drill the foundations in, hook up the lights and, without tearing up the pavement. So it's a little bit different than, than normal, but I can't see putting someone through the expense of all that lighting and then restrict them to not have anything outside the hours of eight in the morning and four-thirty in the afternoon. But if it changes, we need to be able to get lighting, so I, I wanna treat that, if it's okay with you guys, I'm recommending that we treat it as green banked. And the same restrictions, deed restriction requirements, et cetera, as we do with parking. I also, uh, recommend that there's conditional variances granted. Again, we don't know what's going on in the future. Right now, we don't want any illumination that's unnecessary against the residents to the north. If at some time illumination levels are required, then, and the residence is still occupied as a residence, that I, that property's still residentially used, then I think you need, as I pointed out in fifteen D I, you need to grant a variance for some light levels along the curb line closest to that residential property. If on the other hand, that's no longer residentially occupied at the time lighting is required, if it's required, then the no variance should be in effect and they should meet the ordinance identically. I didn't know how else to deal with it in this unique situation. So I figured I would drive Sandy crazy with paragraph fifteen D.
So there'll be some sort of lighting as of late.
There'll be lighting, uh, security lighting, okay. As Jennifer mentioned, there's times when someone passes away at night. The body has to be brought to the building. Someone has to be there to attend to. So there should be security lighting around the immediate area of the building and between the highway and the building, so that it's safe access to the site. As she mentioned, the gate in the back is locked on Logan. So there's no need to light that whole parking lot.
Sure.
And so the whole neighbors on, on Logan Road can see that. And again, with the restrictions on the hours of operation, there, there's no need to ever light that parking lot for this use. But there may be in the future, that's why I'm saying we need the plan and you need the conduit in the ground now, but none of that expensive hardware. I think the rest of the stuff is just, uh, I said in E, the site should be restricted to conduct funeral services, assemblies or any operation other than those minimally necessary to immediately accommodate the death of a community member between the hours of eight AM and four-thirty PM. I think you heard that on Logan. The rest of it's just outside agency approvals and the like.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Excuse me?
I said, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Matt. Obviously, we put a lot more testimony in the record kind of piecemeal as we got here. And we heard what the concerns are. One of the things I wanna talk to you about is when, when, and you're a licensed professional planner as well, correct?
I am, yes.
And you're accepted in that capacity throughout the state of New Jersey?
I have, yes.
Okay. So your testimony that you're offering is both as a planner and as a licensed engineer?
Yes.
Or, the, the first question to be technical, he was introduced and accepted as a PE before, right? Right, I'd submit him as a planner as well.
And, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that we do allow him to testify as a professional planner. Nothing, board members have any questions?
No questions? Agreed.
Okay, thank you. So, Matt, before we, before we start going into some of the details that we talked about, when you look at the variance as it relates to the landscaping, to the property, to the north, that would be the, the clares. We're provided to have a twenty-five foot buffer, we have a ten foot buffer, correct?
Correct.
And we're agreeing to do a fence and a solid row of evergreens along that line to give them a completely, uh, visual buffer.
Correct.
And when you look at the benefits of this application, should the board grant this use? Well, they would be granting that variance as it relates to that residential. You have a scenario where that entire lot could be lit twenty-four hours and we're proposing to only have security lighting, correct?
Correct, yes. This is a, we have very, very minimal lighting and I, I'll call it the back parking lot between the building and Logan Road, um, where it is gated off, so there is no enter, exit, enter and exiting on Logan Road, other than when there is a service attend, uh, happening. So, yes, I believe that, that area with the lighting and the landscaping is mitigated for what, um, the use is here, and it's, it's a good mitigation.
Clear, you had mentioned, um, as a question, I thought, whether the board grants the use, but this is a permitted use.
Right, correct. Just France's site plan with the variances that we're seeking.
You're talking about.
Compared to other uses that could be.
Now, right. Now, Matt, almost all of those, the variances as it relates to the landscaping along the side and, and the like are entirely driven by the fact that that large portion of the site is constrained by the wetlands and the flood hazard area, correct?
Correct. That, as you can see, there's a lot of green area on the, I'll say, south and west side of the property. Um, so that's why you do see that, uh, we, we are, have buffer, um, issues or variances on the north side, so.
Okay, so, but for those environmental constraints, we could meet the ordinance as it relates to that side. And it's only the function of the hardship of not only the odd shape of this lot, but also the environmental constraints, uh, on there.
Yes, we could meet that, we can meet most of those variances.
In your opinion, when you have a use such as a funeral home that has limited hours from eight AM to four-thirty, and you look at what the planning impacts would be from that, and then you look at a twenty-four hour retail restaurant or the like that could be on that site, would you say that the granting of the variances as they relate to landscaping and relate to buffers on this property, um, are a better zoning alternative?
Yes, I would, in my opinion, it is a better zoning alternative to have this type of use, um, and granting those type of variances when you do have that limited lighting in the rear, um, and you are up against, um, other commercial uses to the north.
And we're mitigating the variances to the extent possible. Now, there was a discussion about, um, all the trees. We'd indicated, you'd indicated to me there was fifty-five trees being removed?
Fifty-five trees being removed and ninety, ninety-two being proposed.
Okay. Ninety-two qualifying, and that number is actually going to go up once we, uh, agree with.
Just, yeah, just, just to clarify, that's what's on the plan, but in reality, there aren't ninety-two proposed.
Okay. Oh, okay.
A number of those proposed that are counted or shrubs a bunch of trees.
Okay. But, okay, fair. But whatever we have proposed, that number's gonna go up by virtue of following Mr. Higgins's recommendation. But regardless, we're going to meet with the letter of the, uh, requirements for tree replacement.
Yes.
Okay. Um, you indicated that we're going to comply with the ordinance as well as the state stormwater management regulations as it relates to the, uh.
Yes, we have to for the, the town requirements, state requirements, as well as DEP requirements for stormwater purposes.
Okay. I do have the traffic engineer here who can talk to the parking variance and, uh, the reasons why we need it and how it will all function. But before I bring him up, are there any other questions for Mr. Sharrow?
Well, I, I do have one question. Uh, where's all the water, uh, going? Cause I didn't hear anything about stormwater management.
Sure. So right now, all the water, um, flows to the, the brook, or tributary that runs along the west and south side of the property, between these properties.
So there is a stream there? I thought you said there was piping there.
There's a pipe portion here.
Oh, for thirty-five, okay.
At the corner, at the corner. Then it goes to, um, stri, uh, open stream. So what, what, what would happen is, um, the, similar to any other redevelopment, we would collect the stormwater onsite within the curved areas, collect it, detain it, and let it discharge at a controlled rate. I'm working with, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald on, on that design. And we, we, we're, we're working, um, together, actually, for quite some time now on this, this stormwater, so.
I heard the piping, I didn't.
No, I apologize. Yeah, so, so there's a portion of this, this tributary that is piped underground, um.
Just across the thirty-five and then it goes into a stream from there?
Yeah. Yeah, then it opens up a stream at this corner.
I understand, okay.
Is it pipe twenty goes back under Logan?
Hold, hold on a second. Uh, Ms. Krimko, do you have a problem with?
No, that wasn't, I was more concerned for the appearance for the camera. Ms. Close was holding it in front of her face and chatting, and I didn't want there to be an issue.
Why, you don't have any, uh, concern?
No, I don't have any concern about them holding it up and taking a look at it, of course not.
Would it be clear?
It's just that we're trying to get a close-up of.
I understand, I just know how.
Matt, go ahead, continue.
So, uh, what was the question?
Uh, Logan Road, is there a pipe under Logan Road?
Yes, so under Logan Road, um, there is a culvert that runs under Logan Road and then opens up back up to, uh.
Ramon McGough.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Krimko, I, I have a couple of questions. So I heard the term hardship, uh, mentioned quite a bit. Are, are you asking for a C-one and a C-two variance?
What, what our position is, is that we qualify for both. And we'd indicated that the C-one variance, because there's clearly a hardship by virtue of the environmental constraints, as was testified, as well as the shape of this lot. So that satisfies the positive criteria. But also, in order to demonstrate the negative criteria, if you can show that what we're proposing by way of a variance is a better zoning alternative, then that also qualifies as C-two. So really, the board could grant it under either of those two.
And also under C-two, as long as you prove that the proposed deviation is substantially, um.
Right, that the negatives don't, the negatives always have a detriment, but that they're not substantial, that the positives substantially outweigh the negatives.
Substantially outweigh the negatives.
Correct.
Any other?
I have a quick question. So has there been any concern about maybe adding some impervious coverage here or, or something that has pervious coverage? Cause I'm wondering, is all this water gonna make an already wet area even wetter?
No, so I actually, I actually, I apologize, I explained over here. So what we're, what we're proposing, and I'm working with, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald on this, is to collect all the stormwater onsite, um, have it detained in an underground system, and then have that outlet controlled to let it bleed out essentially and discharge at a controlled rate to meet all the state requirements and local requirements.
So we're basically going to have a basin underground in a structure.
Could you provide the board with greater detail on the status of a DEP regulated approval?
We, we have our wetlands approval. We had a pre-application meeting with the DEP as it relates to flood hazard. We addressed all their comments, we submitted, and I believe we're awaiting that.
Yeah, so, so right now, we have, um, we have the flood hazard and the wetlands, uh, LOIs from, uh, from the state, which I've provided to Mr. Fitzgerald. Uh, we're submitting for the general permit, uh, to do some of the work in the regulated areas.
So effectively, the state has agreed with our location of flood hazard, and now we're submitting a plan and addressing all of the regulations. You can't get a variance from the DEP, so what we're proposing actually conforms to all of their requirements.
And as Mr. Fitzgerald indicated, if the board is inclined to grant an approval, uh, it, it would be clearly subject to all the different, uh, related collateral approvals that Mr. Fitzgerald set forth in his report.
So my, my question is about the islands that you, uh, Jim, you wanna change this island here to make it bigger, to take two more spaces out?
Yes.
Why?
To get more landscaping here. The ordinance requires it to be ten feet wide. It's only four feet wide. You can't put anything in a four-foot wide island. It's just not gonna survive.
So, so all, all of the islands, are you suggesting that all the islands be changed?
No, just that one that's closest to thirty-five that has the most visual impact on the site.
I would, I, I mean, it, it would be my suggestion.
There's only one other one. There's not all the islands. It has to be.
There are more islands on this, on the, on the drawing, this drawing.
But we have, we have to be able to.
So my, 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 to mitigate the island, to mitigate, to, to lessen.
And add more parking.
To add more parking, where it's not an issue, and maybe we can do something to help the buffer.
Which, which is. The islands you're talking about getting rid of.
Uh, she said this one, this one.
In the back lot?
Yeah.
That, that's not good parking because when you try to make those turns, go around that island, you slip a car there.
Yeah. Yeah.
How about in the front?
In the front.
The front door's only either too small and she can't get another parking space in there. The two of them combined are ten feet wide. And you, you need nine, at least nine feet of parking space right here.
And they're not, they're not wide enough for parking.
Well, you, nine feet, right. And if you eliminate two, two islands, that wouldn't it give you two more spaces?
No, no, the islands are only four feet wide.
Four and four, is a.
Is a.
Yeah, you need nine.
Find another foot on that property?
Then we'd have less green.
But you don't, you don't really wanna put cars in an island that you circulate with no protection on the end, even if it's painted.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not a good idea to just have a car. It just never works. So instead of twenty parking across the street, you have eighteen.
Well, actually, it's, it, actually, it's twenty-two now, correct?
Twenty-two, yes.
It's twenty-two, it's not eighteen. It's not twenty. It's eighteen, it's twenty-two, but they're short.
Ms. Krimko?
Yes.
I mean, it's up to the board whether you want it. That, that was a suggestion I made. It's up to the board whether you want to do that.
I was just, I was making the same suggestion, that's all. I was making the same suggestion, that's all, I, I mean, you know, I don't know, that's why I was asking you, I don't really know.
Uh, Mr. Chair, would you be suggesting that we move on to?
The traffic expert?
Sure.
Yeah.
And you can certainly have the, uh.
While he's, while he, yeah, he'll be here, and while he's coming, I just want the board to understand something. Unlike some funeral, almost all other funeral homes are for profit, so the more funerals they do, the more money they make, the better their business is. This is actually a non-for-profit funeral home, so this is really an accommodation to the Orthodox Jewish community in this area. This is not a for-profit entity. That only matters, that doesn't mean that more people aren't gonna die, I understand. But they are not going to be marketing this to collect more business. This is purely to.
Just be careful, are you stipulating that it will always be?
Yes. Yep.
You can ask any question, you go ahead.
Typically, with these funerals, uh, because, you know, there's a hundred and twenty-eight spots. What is the, I don't know, average attendance in, in an event like this?
I can tell you that, a- and we talked about it in advance, we can stipulate, there is no average. There may be one or two very large funerals, and then most of the funerals will all be accommodated within this parking lot. So that overflow is not going to be for every funeral. You note now, Bloomfield Cooper, we're all familiar with. Now, understand that that serves not just the Orthodox community, it serves the entire Jewish community. It's a whole different animal. I learned an awful lot about Orthodox funerals, even though I've been to a hundred funerals at Bloomfield Cooper. So, there, there's a procession, there, everybody.
If I could just.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you gonna back that up with testimony?
Yes.
Is he gonna testify to that?
Well, he can certainly testify, what, what I was trying to lead to is that Bloomfield Cooper. What I was going to go to and once it was sworn in was how many spots they actually have there in comparison to what we have, to a comparison. So that's what I was, that's what I was leading into.
Yeah, sir, would you, uh, stand, read right hand your prompt, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Full name from the record, please.
Uh, Justin Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R.
Justin, briefly provide the board with the benefit of your credentials as a licensed traff- professional engineer specialized in traffic.
Absolutely. I hold a bachelor's in engineering from the University of Delaware. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania and Texas. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer through the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Been testifying before boards for approximately the last twenty years, and have been before this board, although it's probably been five or six years.
Submit him at the next.
Do you accept, uh, his credentials?
Credentials are accepted.
Thank you very much.
Justin, you had the benefit of sitting through what led up to this, and you heard the board's concerns. And these are not unlike the concerns that we discussed in pre-planning before we submitted, as well as at our technical review. So, from a traffic engineering perspective, do you feel that the site can appropriately accommodate? The use based on this number of parking spots, and are you comfortable with the safety of the overflow pedestrians crossing over Logan Road?
I am, and I think what needs to be kept in mind, there's been a little bit of discussion on how the parking is generated. For this type of funeral home, the Orthodox funeral home, as opposed to a more secular funeral home that we would see. As, as been previously testified to, in a secular, uh, funeral home, you have various viewing, uh, services. You have people coming in and out, and there's more of a revolving door type of, uh, attendance at those sort of, um, as those sort of buildings. What we have here is not that, there is not.
But to answer that, so, the parking requirement in the ordinance is based on a secular or a more common type of funeral? Where there is more, what was the word you used in the email?
So, there, there's a rolling utilization of parking. You have people coming in and coming out, as opposed to all arriving at once, and then all leaving at once. Now, that'll lead on to something else, but, but based on that, we feel that the parking that's being proposed on the site. For the vast majority of the funerals that we see, will be likely to be able to accommodate that without the need to overflow onto either, uh, English Lane or under Dorset. There will be the opportunities, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that they're not gonna have a big funeral and they're gonna need to utilize that. But I believe, based on the information that we've been provided, that it is, it's a, it's not all that likely. And it's not gonna happen all that often.
But if it does.
And when it does, there will be need to, um, people to be able to cross, uh, Logan Road. Now, Logan Road is a thirty-five mile an hour roadway. It is signed for twenty-five miles an hour. As you come off the curve and off Route thirty, uh, off thirty-five with warning signs. I'm not here to tell you that the people coming off of thirty-five are traveling at twenty-five miles, or even thirty-five miles an hour. However, the location of our proposed driveway is actually after that initial curve, and if I can refer back to a five. We have, um, looking north would be to the left on this plan, but as you travel off of Route thirty-five. You come around a slight bend to the right, and then you have the straight visual line of, uh, of Logan Road. And that's one of the reasons we looked to locate the driveway where we did. Um, one, we wanted to reduce interaction with people coming to and from English Lane and Dorset Road. We also wanted to give the sightlines, uh, necessary for people as they were driving along both Logan Road and then coming to and from the site. Um, I think it's a good suggestion that we would need to do some signage there, and possibly some striping for a crosswalk. To alert people that aren't familiar with the area that there could be pedestrians crossing. I do think there is good visibility along Logan Road for drivers to identify that there are pedestrians. But the visual science and the visual striping will, will go a long way to further educating people that there's the potential for a pedestrian to be crossing there.
Mr. Teller, are they gonna be directing people to come in off of thirty-five onto Logan? Or are they gonna ask people to come in, if the lot's full, then they're gonna cross Logan and park that way?
That's my understanding, that everyone will be encouraged to park on, on the site.
Come in off of thirty-five, if the, if the parking lot is full, they're gonna go.
Then you have the capability to go into the overflow parking, that's correct.
I gotta question that, because honest, I mean, how do you get to that northbound thirty-five?
Exactly.
Where am I coming from?
Logan.
I'm coming from north of this funeral home.
Yeah.
And you want me on northbound thirty-five to enter it?
Okay, so you're saying.
I'm saying you gotta go to the Esberry Circle.
You have to go to the circle, come around and come back in.
Well, but it, let's, if, look, thinking about it realistically, though, you always wanna be closest. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna go, yes, I'm gonna do that to see if there's any parking up front, long before I go park in front of English Manor.
I'm gonna drive up Logan Road, make a right into the site, drive up to the front of the site, if there's nothing back, I'm gonna go back the other side.
If you're familiar with the town, you are gonna go that way.
But that's still, you're gonna have the patrons that are looking to park on the site, as the most convenient parking.
Questioning that one, but I'm just telling you, they're not gonna enter the site from northbound thirty-five in the majority. So, can you reverse your logic of what you're saying, if they weren't gonna enter from thirty-five, but they're coming down Logan? As far as the safety to get to that site?
I, I still believe that you have good visibility along Logan Road. If the patrons are going to utilize Logan Road to enter. You have the potential to enter off of Logan Road, identify whether there's a parking space with full circulation through the rear, um, south parking area. Access the front parking area and fully circulate through that to determine whether there's a space. And then when there's not, you have the ability to exit back onto Logan Road without having to go out on Route thirty-five and utilize the, uh, the parking that's on street.
Those restaurants, right now, it's English Manor, where, in the English Manor, really, there's been a restaurant there ever since I was a little kid. We used to play a Paul Samperius behind them, went back there, but, I mean, those restaurants have big events and, and people get there. In about the same numbers as a big funeral, it doesn't seem to be an issue.
I know, but I, I go back to.
I just look at the driveway in a safe spot, there's safe sight distance. If we're gonna have a crosswalk, it's gotta meet all the MUTCD standards. Uh, be in a, a safe spot, be barrier free, be striped, signed, etc. I mean, all those things.
Is that something you're requiring, Bill, in your?
I'm, I'm okay with it, it, yeah, I mean, I would talk to the police department, I would talk to everybody involved. Uh, Jennifer just happened to ask me on a sidebar, could you put up a, um, a blinker, a flasher that could operate during? I think your DOT would have to approve that.
But I also still go back to, there's no sidewalks, there's no way for, once these pedestrians start crossing.
Well, I'm saying, they have to put a sidewalk, it has to be, it has to be barrier free code. You can't have, you know, you don't be barrier free code typically running up a public street in a garage.
So then if there's no sidewalk on this side of the, of.
Right, they'd have to line up with a sidewalk on the site that got you into the building.
Okay.
But, but again, it's, we could certainly, I, I just asked Justin whether or not we could put a sign to the west. Southwest of the, of, on Logan Road, so cars coming off the highway when funerals were happening would see a flashing sign. Whether it said pedestrian crossing or, you know, but I mean, I think that that's gonna be the most effective. Would you agree?
Yeah, absolutely. The more visual context you can give the driver, that there is the potential for pedestrian, the better it is.
Justin, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Let's make the assumption that they're coming from, they're gonna go the, uh, thirty-five north, and they're gonna turn into the place. What kind of situation, if we have one of these gigantic funerals, or even a fairly large size one, now all of a sudden, you've got all these people trying to get into this funeral home. It appears to be a fairly tight, you know, entrance there. Are we talking about a huge safety issue? Where all of a sudden, now we've got cars backed up all the way down thirty-five into the circle. I mean, it could be a disaster. My experience is, and I've got unfortunately my fair share of funerals, is that, yes, some of them are very small and. But some of them are really, really big, and that's the only concern I have. Conceptually, I don't have a problem with the business, I have a conceptual, I have a problem with the fact that all of a sudden, it turns into one of these, the whole community's coming. Now we have a thousand people, five hundred people. Where are we gonna put all these people, and where are they all gonna park?
And to compound that, the idea that it's not a rolling concept, everybody's getting there at the same time, everything shuts down.
So, so, while everyone arrives, they're not all arriving in the exact same moment, I'll give you that. Now, let's, we can talk about the driveway on Route thirty-five, right, that's under the jurisdiction of the NJDOT. We have submitted the NJDOT, we've received comments from them, we've re-submitted to them, and we have gotten a verbal approval pending this approval. So, the DOT has looked at that driveway, and they've determined that the design that we have meets all their codes and is safe and efficient. To handle the traffic associated with this project. That being said, again, because there is not the, the constant turnover of people in the, um, in the viewing stage. People arrive here and they park. They're not circulating, they're not coming to and from, everybody's arriving and parking in their space. And then at the end of the funeral, they're all getting ready and leaving. So, a lot of the congestion that's associated with a secular funeral home. Or any other high turnover use is the search and the, the, the in and out, and the conflict that that comes along with, um, that type of circulation. So, based on the way the, this type of funeral home operates, I, I don't see a concern. People are gonna be able to come in off of Route thirty-five, they're going to be able to circulate and visually inspect whether there's parking spaces up front. If they're not, then they will be heading to the rear section of the, um, the parking along Logan Road and looking for a parking space back there. And then, if we're at the point where there's actually one of the large funerals, they would be exiting and, and accessing the, the parking spaces on English Lane.
But to Dave, but to Dave's point, the idea that there's gonna be this log jam. When everybody's trying to get there, a very big, when it's a very big event, it's gonna be.
Well, I mean, the other thing we need to keep in mind is that when people arrive at the funerals, they're not all coming one by one. They're coming multiple people to a car, the whole family's in the car. So, when we're talking about a, um, a worship space of what we're proposing. We're on, and there's the reason the ordinance would say a hundred and fifty cars for a secular, um, uh, funeral home. You know, we feel that that number is probably even a little bit lower, but there isn't the quantifiable data out there for me to reach to. Normally, in, under these circumstances, I would go to ITE, and I would say, hey, what's the parking demand for something like this? And unfortunately, there isn't really the data out there for Orthodox funerals, it just hasn't been studied. So, what we're relying on is a lot of the information from the operators that are doing this. And what they're telling us is, one, they feel that the parking that's on the site is really sufficient for their normal operation and their normal business plan. But further than, you don't, you don't have all these people coming in individual car, they're just gonna have the family. So, the, the, the amount of space in there isn't generating a thousand cars. It's not generating five hundred cars, it's gonna generate. A hundred and fifty, a hundred and thirty for, for one of the larger funerals.
And, Justin, if a funeral's called for ten o'clock, that doesn't mean that all hundred cars converge on the site at ten o'clock.
That's correct. People are showing up early beforehand, you have some of the families, some of the extended people that will be there. Um, so, yes, there's, there's, it's spread out over a little bit of time.
And this is, and even in a, and I always get secular and non-secular confused, secular means non-religious?
That's correct.
Okay, even in a secular funeral, or secu- or, or church service or anything, there's a start time. So, whatever use goes, they're secular or non-secular, there's going to be a period where any place of assembly where there is a start time. So, that was contemplated when the ordinance was adopted, and this use was permitted there. Um, the extra twenty cars that we're looking for by way of a variance, is that gonna tip the scales in any way, shape, or form from a traffic perspective?
No, no, not at all.
Uh, Jennifer, you know, I have, uh, some experience with, uh, Bloomfield Cooper. And typically, the, uh, the, uh, arrival period is usually from forty-five minutes before the actual. Um, uh, funeral. And, and then people don't, everybody doesn't all leave at the same time either. Some people wait, some people stay, some people socialize a little bit, you know, to, you know, for the, for the family, whatever. So, I, I mean, I'm not saying that that, you know, I don't, I mean, uh, and the other thing is that Bloomfield Cooper has, what, they have sixty spots?
A lot less.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, I, I know.
They have thirty-one spots, and I know from experience, they stack you there, but they give.
And you can't get out, you cannot get out until the, some person in front of you leaves. So, I mean, this is actually is a much better layout, I mean, so to speak. Uh, I mean, you know, and even at Bloomfield Cooper, when people come up the lot, that, 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 that location. They don't even look to go in the lot, they go down King's Highway and find a parking space. So, I mean, you may have that here, but I, I see that, you know, you have the, the, the V where there's a, you know, street parking. Uh, you may not, you may not need it. I mean, I, I mean, I would say that, like you said, many of the people come. Um, maybe four or five in a car, cause people know that there's limited parking, and why should, you know, so they kill themselves, so.
Well, and funerals are the types of things that you go with your family members.
Did you have testimony before as to the capacity in the building?
No, we never got to that.
What is the capacity?
The, the fire code capacity, I'm not sure, um.
Well, let me ask a, a relay question. Is the fire code capacity related to the maximum number of people you could have at a service?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, let's have some testimony on that then. Obviously, we can't.
You wanna come up?
Yeah, you're gonna have to have testimony on that.
Come on up, shalom. Any more questions for Justin, before we get?
Any more questions?
He's, so, you agree that we should put some type of, uh, crosswalk?
Signage?
Signage.
And signage, and how i- how are these people going to, are they gonna walk through the parking lot? I mean, where, where are they, how are they getting to the building from the, from the V?
I mean, at this.
How are they getting to, on your site, I don't see any sidewalks at all, period.
There, there are no sidewalks, no.
So, someone who parks all the way at the end of Logan Road, how are they getting to, they're walking through the parking lot?
Yes, they would, they would, they would walk through the parking lot.
That's the story, okay.
Kind of like Seabee Square Mall?
Wegmans, Seabee Square, any shopping center?
I have another question. So, let's assume that we have a, a big event. We're gonna use, utilize the V in front of the English Manor there. What happens if the English Manor happens to be having an event also? Is there any, uh?
So, that's a, that's a great question. The English Manor has a capacity of two hundred people, based on their website. From your ordinance, that would generate a parking demand of sixty-seven spaces. Now, we testified too that there are eighty-four spaces along the combination of English Lane and Dorset Road. But there's also additional twenty-seven spaces in the parking lot that, on the piece of property that's owned by the English Manor. So, you have a hundred and eleven parking spaces available there, which gives us what was mentioned earlier, is a surplus of, of forty-four. If they both were going off at the same time. Now, the English Manor has, you know, from a wedding standpoint, your Friday and Saturday are your more popular, but then Sundays. Um, so there's like, there's, uh, a massive likelihood, knowing that there won't be funerals here on a Friday or a Saturday, for the interaction.
Friday night.
Friday, Friday night, that's correct. Um, but even if it was, I can tell you, af- as, having been to three or four weddings at English Manor. That when you come in, you park up here, or you, or you park along the southwest corner as close as you can to the, to the building. And when you can't get one of those spaces, you come around the corner and you park in these, and those are the ones that fill up first. Whereas the parking spaces that will be utilized more from this standpoint is as you exit this site, you, uh, our site. You realize that there isn't any parking in the parking lot, you're gonna make the right hand turn onto Logan, the left into English Lane, and you're gonna park in one of those first spaces right there. Which are the least desirable ones from an English Manor standpoint.
In your opinion, there's not gonna be any issue, even if there were, despite the fact that there was testimony that. There, we don't anticipate any overlap based on their peak time and our peak time, even if there was, you don't anticipate. there, we don't anticipate any overlap based on their peak time and our peak time, even if there was, you don't anticipate any conflict?
I do not, no.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I mean, has anybody reached out to the English Manor? That's not part of your purvey to reach out to them. It's just public parking, it is what it is and...
Actually, we did a, we had to do a little bit of a deep dive. After our first, um, meeting, we were told, well, I don't know that those are public. I think those are owned by the English Manor. So we actually did the Oprah request, reviewed all of the documents, reviewed the tax map. It's all public.
Their la-, their, their other lot, that's owned by the township also, or that's owned by?
No, the, the lot which is, um, that actually runs from Dorset Road all the way up to Logan Road. It's essentially on the west side of Dorset Road.
Yeah.
Is owned by the English Manor.
The English Manor owns their space.
That's correct, yep.
You didn't file any records with this application to, to verify that it's all public spaces, right?
Well, no, I think I did forward the information both to Bill Jim and I think I copied Amy. So it is on, it is on file.
So are you satisfied, Bill? Okay, that's what I wanna get.
Okay.
Any other questions for Justin before the architect come up?
And Justin's available for questions later, right?
I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Okay, well, the next witness is coming up. The, the chair is coming up with a question, which is in part based on a note that was passed a half hour ago. How long do we wanna proceed tonight? Because of course, normally we only hear an application for an hour.
This would be my last witness.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we're fine with that.
Okay. Thank you. If I could have Shimon affirm as to his testimony?
Would you affirm that the testimony that you will give tonight is the truth?
Yes.
Hold that closer to your mouth.
Yes.
Can you state your name?
My name is Shimon Greenbaum.
Okay, Shimon, you're a licensed architect, State of New Jersey, and you're employed at MMA Architects?
Yes.
Okay, just, since you haven't been here before, just give the board the benefit of your educational work experience briefly.
Yeah, um, I have a master's in architecture from the Academy of Art University in San Francisco. And I have been with MMA for the past over four and a half years, um, practicing architecture.
Okay, and you were the architect who worked on this project along with other people at MMA?
Yes, I, I was probably the principal designer on the interior layouts of the, of the space.
So in the, in the assembly area, how many seats are, fit in there comfortably?
I believe we're slightly over five fifty, between five fifty and five sixty, I believe, in the, in the, in the main assembly area.
And is it your experience, based on both designing funeral homes as well as being part of the Orthodox faith and attending funerals, that many people come, three, four, five people to a car?
Yes, most people, most people would come together. Most funerals would not hit that number, um, by a long shot, but, um...
It would be occasional.
It would be very occasionally that you would have such a large funeral.
I have a couple of questions. So you, you mentioned the main assembly hall?
No, I said the assembly hall.
The assembly hall, we, there-
There's only one hall.
There's only one.
There's only one hall. We have a, uh, office and, uh, we have a few-
What's the fire capacity?
I believe that the total building, including the prep, the prep rooms, I believe we'd beat about six fourteen.
So would it be fair to say that with moving around the chairs and other objects, that you could have up to six?
No, the six, the, the extra people that we have are, are in the basement prep rooms for the, for the chavra that, that would be preparing.
What would be the maximum number of people you could functionally have at any one time?
In the funeral?
Yeah, in the funeral home itself, what would be the amount of seats we put in there, which I, it's slight, I think it's, I don't have the exact number, but-
Are the seats fixed?
The seats are fixed.
The seats, okay. I counted the seats, actually. There's thirty-four rows of fifteen seats each, which is five hundred and ten. Then there's two rows of eight and two rows of seven, which is essentially two more rows of fifteen, so there's five hundred and forty seats.
And then we, then we add ten seats for dignitaries facing the other way.
So five hundred and fifty would be the max.
So, Ms. Krenko, would you stipulate that you would never have more than five hundred and fifty, um, members at any one time?
Sure.
Comfortable for you?
Yep.
And it, so five hundred and fifty patrons, what about the staff?
So, I, I, okay. It, 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 we're gonna, we'll go through that quickly. So, we went over this in great detail. When an Orthodox Jewish person dies, how do they come to the funeral?
So, the Orthodox community buries within twenty-four hours. We try to bury within twenty-four hours with the exception being the Sabbath itself. When a person, when a person passes, the chavra would be called.
The chavra being the-
They're, they're a volunteer burial society, um, within the community. They would be called. They'd stop, drop, and roll, pick up the, um, pick up the deceased from the hospital. I believe, they told me, within the community, they use the Hatzal ambulance for that without lights and sirens. They bring the body to the, they bring the deceased to the, to the funeral home. They're a pretty secretive society. They don't, they don't like when people know exactly what they're doing. They, they come quietly, because it's considered a very holy, um, process to do. And they would, they would, um, bring the deceased to the prep rooms that we created in the basement.
So it would be one person, two people?
It would be two people that would be able to handle the stretcher, to bring the stretcher down. And then they would have three or four people that would be actually working on cleansing the body for, and prepping it for-
This would not be during the funeral?
No, this would actually be sometime between the time of passing and the funeral. Obviously, because it's volunteer, it would happen at the most convenient time in which they could get people together. Unless, obviously, they're trying to make the funeral quickly in which everyone, the few people would come, but they'd be out by the time the funeral starts, usually.
Okay, and then there would be the shomer who walks over the body?
So if the, if the deceased passes at night and they bring the body there at night, we do not leave a body unattended until, um, until the, the body is buried. So there's somebody who would be a night watchman who would stay on, onsite. We have an office in the basement, which actually has a window into the refrigerator, so they can actually keep watch on the, on the, any of the deceased, any, any bodies that are there.
So at any given time, there would never be more than five people on site, except during a funeral?
No.
And those-
Correct. I'm sorry.
And, and those five people, their duties are done and they're not there during the funeral. So there is no congregation of people during a funeral or any other work being done, correct?
True, uh, correct.
Think that.
So you're saying that there'll be five hundred and fifty, potentially, there could be five hundred and fifty people?
At a funeral service?
At a funeral service. And there are no employees of the funeral home there also?
You, you may have one person in an office, but the, the people who work with the bodies would usually not be there. Or they'd be part of the actual five hundred and fifty people attending.
Just, I find it hard to believe that there'd be no staff there, like, no one directing anybody?
It's a completely volunteer-
It's part of the community. It's, it's not unlike, not unlike Bloomfield Cooper.
Be any ushers or somebody standing up?
Yeah, the, the, the way the funerals work is it's generally communal run. You'd have volunteers from within the community that would maybe help people. We don't have ushers. We don't have, um, any of that type of staff. There may be someone there to facilitate paperwork that may have to go together with the body to, to the, um, to the burial, burial site. So you may have one person in an office filling out some paperwork. There's generally no other staff there. You know, the, the, the chavra may, one person may be there, or they'd be part of the five hundred and fifty people in the funeral.
And that's what I was gonna say. So those people who are directing or acting as an usher are actually part of the grieving people who are attending the funeral, part of that.
Correct.
It's kinda different from where they have greeters and-
Yeah, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of what's going on.
Another point to, to be made about the people coming and, 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 you know, staying there. One, one of the things is, of course, we bury within twenty-four hours. This is happening, we're not scheduling the funeral. The funeral would happen, you know, someone dies on a Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, ten o'clock, in the middle of a workday, they're making the funeral. People are not coming exactly on time because they gotta close up whatever they're doing at work and they gotta get, get to the funeral. So you're not gonna have, when you, when we were talking about the traffic counts, about people coming at one specific time, it most likely will never happen. People are, are trying to get everything together, hearing shocking news about somebody who passed and trying to get to the funeral. You're not gonna have that crunch of, oh, everyone's got an eleven o'clock appointment to get here.
Do we have any, um, he's, you're an architect, right?
Correct.
Do you have any drawings of the building?
Oh, we have tons. We moved them in. These were all moved into evidence as A three.
Gee, I didn't know we had that many. Is A three? Since you have lots of boards there, were these part of the application?
They were all in.
All right, because they might be looked at, I think we should mark each board separately. So, uh, three A, three B. So would someone physically mark that so we have some clarity?
Yeah, we can. But, that's fine. I mean, we did, we submitted the six, six sheet set. A, three A.
The first one would be three A, and then just mark them in sequence, please. Next one's three B. Uh, and for the record, could someone just quickly identify?
Yeah, Shimon will, because he was the designer.
All right, very good.
And the architect.
S-H-I-M-O-N. Greenbaum is G-R-E-E-N-E-V-A-U-N.
So it's three A through three F.
Okay, and we'll have the witnesses clarify what they are.
All right, so Shimon, on three A are the color-rendered elevations?
Yeah, so these, these are the color-rendered elevations. The concept that we were trying to have over here was give the severity of the, of the, um, of the moment. So we have a minimizing entrance as someone comes in and closes in on them, so they move from the light of the world. You know, as they're getting at the funeral, they feel more getting into the mode, getting into the, the solemn moment of, of the funeral itself. We have some unique, um, needs, um, that we take care of on the, on the exterior of the building. One of them is, we believe, we, we wash our hands outside a building after a funeral, so we created these covered areas that would have sinks so that people can, that we facilitate that immediately after the funeral. You'll notice a privacy screen over here. As I mentioned before, the chavra likes that privacy. They don't want people seeing what's going on, so we, we, we built a privacy wall. For, at the time that we did this rendering, you know, the community I come from, we use a hearse. I was told that they use a Hatzal ambulance, so the rendering actually has, has a hearse in there, but, you know, would be whatever, whatever, whatever they're using to, to deliver the, the deceased to the, to the, to the facility would be, would, would be behind that privacy screen and they have, and the chavra has their own entrance into the building, which I'll discuss a little bit later. The building materials, we're trying to keep it sort of clean and, and crisp, but what people would imagine would be at a funeral home. We have like marbles, marble type, um, I'm not saying that we're gonna necessarily use specifically marble, but a stone finish in blacks and whites with some wood accents in, in the building. As we, we move to the, to the actual, the actual building itself, um, over here you can see the, the minimizing walkway as you get into the building. We have-
That's sheet three B.
Three B. Here, here, here's the covered sinks and another set of sinks that we have on the outside of the building. As you can see, there's almost nothing in the building other than the main, the main parlor. We do have, you know, some people do come early, as was mentioned earlier, some family members may want to grieve. So we have a family grieving room. We have some room for, some people may want to say a few prayers on the side. So we have a meditation, we call it, we call it a meditation room, it'll be sort of like a prayer room, but it's not a, it's not a synagogue. It's not an assembly specifically. A few people before, if you come early and they wanted to spend a little bit of time, it would be over there. Here's a waiting room for, for people, some people came early who didn't want, who didn't wanna pray, and we have an office, um, in case there's any office needs, um, for, for the people running, running the facility. There's, there's a general office over here. So typically, the, the, they would, the, um, hearse would, would, would pull up, or the ambulance would pull up over here. The, um, they would unload, they would unload the stretcher. We have a lift that goes directly downstairs. Downstairs is probably a unique, um,
C?
Is a unique, um, Orthodox-specific preparation area. I'm not sure, I don't think you want me to bore you with the details of how the funeral, um, prep space works, but we, we accommodated. Everything that's in here is, um, we, we, we've spoken to the chavra from various different jurisdictions. You know, from Brooklyn and from, from Deal and the wider community as to exactly how, what exactly they need and what they want. And everything down here was designed specifically to give the utmost honor to, to the deceased and make sure that the processes work as smoothly and as cleanly as possible. So basically, the entire area is just a prep area with some mechanical space and some storage space if they would need some place for some coffins and, you know, because things gotta move quickly, so they don't have any time to go order something from somewhere. Everything's gotta be held onsite.
Could you just go back to, to Dave again for a second, please?
Sure.
And I guess that's the seating in the, in the center?
This is the seating in the center, yes. So we gotta make-
Yeah, the seats are fixed.
There's a main center aisle and we, we, we are code compliant on all of, all of the aisles and the clearances allowing for the influx and egress from, from the space as, as these funerals actually work. So some aisles are actually a little bit wider than we would need because of the, the, of the process of when they bring, when they bring in the deceased, people follow behind. So we wanted to give a little bit of a wider, wider aisle in the middle, so people should feel that they're able to grieve as they have to.
So right now, Bloomfield Cooper really is the only Jewish funeral home in the nearby area that would accommodate the community?
So I understand. I've nev-, I've never visited there.
But as far as you know, that's the only one?
Yes.
So what this would do is, whatever parking situation they have on King's Highway and other issues they have there, would actually alleviate that and be able to use this site, which as you heard from the traffic engineer, would function much better than Bloomfield Cooper.
Is that a question of?
That's a question.
Can you answer?
Yes.
I think that's it, right?
Uh, before you go, uh, if you could go back to the prior, uh, display, uh, I'm sorry.
You want the basement?
I went after that one. I, I'm focusing, oh, that one. So it says unexcavated crawl space?
With totally unneeded space.
All right, so is there a stipulation that that will never be improved?
Can't be. It's just gonna be crawl space.
Right, so?
Yes.
Nobody wants to pay the developing either. And then, um, we have the basic, uh, building elevations into the color as to what the building would look like. Obviously, obviously, the, the, the 3D renderings do a lot more justice to the building and, and these, there's a lot of ins and outs. We wanted to, to bring into the space the, the, the celestial windows, um, so there is natural light within the space, so we could get the proper mood within the space. The side, the side wings are, are lower roofs with, with higher parapets, in which we would be able to keep all of our mechanical equipment screened, screened from view and-
I'm sorry, is the signage on the front, that's not lit, correct? I'm sorry.
The signage is, the, this signage is not lit. This is actually inspirational. It's an inspirational verse from the Bible.
Thank you.
And this is the, the side facing the residential neighbor and this is the side facing, um, facing Route thirty-five. And then we have a, a signage sheet which basically, oh, I actually did write over here lit, but I don't think we're actually gonna do it lit.
So we'll, we're gonna agree that it's not gonna be lit?
Okay.
And then this is, this is the monument sign that we have.
Is the monument sign gonna be lit, though? No. No?
No, we're not, no advertising necessary.
Good nonprofit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's for a marker, you know, I'll go down to the funeral home and make a right, you know, like, it could be useful in that manner, but whatever, you guys choose.
Any questions for Shimon?
So, uh, maximum capacity is five fifty. The number of parking spaces on the lot is?
One twenty-eight.
One twenty-eight. You indicated that from your experience that, um, people rarely drive themselves?
Typically, people would come in groups. You know, it's, 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 there's, has been no time, just understanding mindset. There's has been no time to acclimate to, to a death. So people are reeling and they're leaning on each other for support. So typically speaking, people are going, they're, you know, they're going to be coming together with family just by the very nature of, of, of the support system that exists, especially, especially in such a tight-knit community.
So will they be coming from their homes or is there like a, a, do they go to a synagogue beforehand?
No, they'd be coming from their homes.
So therefore, uh, family groups would-
So, therefore, family groups would logically be in one car and would not come separately?
Yeah, and even if they'd be coming from work, you'd have people grouping up from work to come.
Is there any standard procession or activity afterwards?
No.
So, the 550 seats that are in that center hall, if you will, it's appropriate with 150 parking spaces, is that how we came up with that number?
Your ordinance does it not by number of seats, but by square footage. So, for every 25 square feet of assembly space, which is the area where the seats are, we need to have one parking space.
That's correct, that's what it was?
So, that's how your ordinance determines it. In synagogues, they do it by seat, but they do it by actual square footage, probably because people might, you know, for whatever reason, that's how it's done.
Just to go further, is it 560 or 550? 550 and then 10 other people?
No, the 550 includes those 10 people.
It's 540 plus 10.
I noticed that you don't have a glass enclosure room viewing to the funeral.
True, that we would have to deal with. It's possible that we would use some office space if we had to.
So, that would, that may increase the amount of warm bodies in the building, correct?
Possibly, yeah, well, you're talking about for the count?
Yes.
So, that would, unless they stand outside. So, if the choice is made to bring them inside, we would have to, we would have to increase.
I know that Bloomfield has just, you know, it's a glass window.
It makes life very complicated to actually build, yes.
Really?
I mean, we could do it, but it's hard.
Right, okay, but so, but you're not including that, but you do have the space to do it if you desire.
There is the space to do it if.
For the benefit of the board members who don't understand the cone.
Yeah, so, in the Jewish faith, the priestly families who, you know, we're talking about for the past.
5,000 years.
Oh, not even, about 3,500 years, 3,000 years, people who come from Aaron descendants, man after man, they're not allowed to come into the same building as a deceased. So, what has to happen is that there can be no air connection between a room that they're in and a room that the deceased is in. So, when I said it's difficult to build, is all systems have to be completely disconnected. So, you can't have any air conditioning systems, you can't have any systems connecting it, we can't have any plenty of spaces connecting. It's a little bit of a complicated space to build, but if we had to, if the community needed it, we would be able to facilitate that probably in one of these spaces, in either the office or the family grieving space. But these rooms are only 500 square feet, you know, we wouldn't be talking about a lot of people.
Right.
And it's not all the time either, it's just on occasion.
It probably depends on the.
Pretty much all the time.
Probably depends on the deceased, but I understand, I understand in the Israeli community, there's a lot higher percentage in the Ashkenazi community.
Right, it's the levim that are.
So, Steve, in terms of your questions, are you raising that because there's a concern that the 550 might be increased, or is it a difference?
I, you know, I would say that, you know, if this was an important funeral, a dignitary funeral, you know, you'd fill up every one of those seats, and then you would have some of the khanim who are obviously cannot go into those seats, so they'd be in the side room like they are at Bloomfield Cooper. Sometimes there's four, sometimes there's 10, sometimes there are 15, I mean, you know, so, I mean, I don't know, I can't tell you, but based on the square footage, I think that, you know, it needs to be looked at because it is really an additional number, and in all reality, it's gonna happen.
So, there's been a stipulation to 550, but there very well could be a realistic issue of compliance. If you are in a public building, like if you're in this room, and you have a fire official here, then that fire official knows exactly how many people because there's a physical count, right? But at a funeral like this, is it a question of being able to control that number?
There's no way to control it, you know, it just, it happens, it just happens.
I think the stipulation with the 550 seats really is the controlling factor. Like you said, if there's five or 10 more, that's not gonna make a difference as to the parking and the traffic. Really, the number of seats is gonna be the driving factor instead on a more regular basis.
If there's any concern by the board, based on that comment you just made, do we have some comfort figure as to the maximum extra and how that might relate to extra parking so that there's an alleviation of any concern?
Okay, 10, would you say?
Well, one of the things, and I'll just talk from my experience in Brooklyn and other communities is, when there's a large funeral, whether you have the seats, you don't have the seats, whether you have a building or you don't have a building even, if people are gonna come, they're gonna come. And there's nothing you can do about it, and that once in every five year event is not something that we can ever plan for. And I've been by funerals where we've had people on the outside of a funeral home for blocks and blocks and blocks, where you had 10,000 people sitting on the outside of a funeral. So.
I think what he's trying to say is, if I may, just like when you have a wake, like if you have a wake at one of the non-Jewish funeral homes, and it was an important member of the community, whether it be a mayor, a police chief, or a young child, oftentimes, you're driving around looking for parking spots. There's never gonna be enough room, that's the function of a funeral home. We understand that there's rare times where there's the type of person that would generate that kind of turnout. That's going to happen in every funeral home, secular, non-secular, Jewish or non-Jewish. But generally speaking, from a planning perspective, the testimony before you is that we're only 20 spaces short under your ordinance based on the square footage of the building. And the testimony that was provided by the engineer as well as the traffic engineer is, we have a surplus of 45 on-street spaces to accommodate it. So, we can more than mitigate the variance that we need because we have a very unique situation of having the on-street parking. When the applicant first came to me, and I realized we needed a parking variance, I said, "No, thank you", until I realized that we had public parking and an excess of public parking to accommodate it. So, of course, Shimon went off into, you know, another reality here.
I was talking about a once in five, once a 10 year, I'm saying we can't plan for it.
We've all been.
No, 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 I know, that's what I'm saying, so there's always times where you'll wait three hours to get in for a wake, and there's nowhere to park, and you're driving around, and you're driving around, you can never plan for that, so.
That was exactly my point.
Right, I wanted to say it a little differently.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question for the traffic engineer, but that would bring him back up, not for the gentleman.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, alright.
Who had a question for the traffic engineer?
I thought Ms. Spouse had a question for the.
The traffic engineer doesn't answer trees, though.
No, 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 for the architect, I thought she had a question.
I thought you said you had a question.
Well, actually, it's to Jim on the trees, so I know we're at.
Alright, so.
But the way those are planted along, I put it, would that be the north side of the lot? Do you feel it's, they're dense enough, I know you had said.
You're talking about the screen between the parking lot and the Claire's house?
Yes.
I think it has to be changed, but I think the plants that are proposed on the plan are deer food, they're gonna be eaten, so it has to have different plants in there. I have some suggestions that I will work with the Claire's and with the applicant to come up with something that's gonna be a solid screen, that's gonna be effective and not be destroyed.
We agreed to that from the beginning.
The Claire's could make a recommendation and discuss it with Jim Higgins, and that's how the decision would be made.
That's all I have.
So, I guess we were talking a lot about the parking, and I looked at that site for a while, and I just wanted to talk to you about the entrance from 35. Would it make any sense to consider bringing an in and an out separated, and then be able to remove that back and forth at the end, and maybe drop down some more parking in the middle there? I mean, how many spaces could we possibly get? Would we get another, is there like, and is there, I guess the question to Jim is, what is the setback on the street?
For parking required?
For parking in regard to that vegetation?
It's definitely 25 feet.
It's 25 feet, and how far do you actually have there? I think you're more than 25 feet, right?
Joe, what you're talking about, though, is they go in and come around and go out, and there's no way to circulate interior in the parking lot, because.
We also, there's flood hazards there, we can't go into that.
You can't come in on the side where that parking lot is on the right?
No, not allowed to touch it.
Not, not there.
Push the aisle straight out to the highway.
It's in the parking lot, right in there.
So, in order to accommodate a radius in this area, I believe that falls within the flood hazard area. Matt, I mean, you might be able to talk a little bit more about that. From a circulation standpoint, I think we want to keep two-way circulation throughout the entire front area of the parking. In this area, though, I don't believe we can really encroach from the radius that would be necessary here, sorry, at the west southwest corner in the front of the building, front of the parking lot, in order to accommodate that.
If you took that curb line.
This right here?
No, we're the sensitive area, the curb line, and ran straight to the street, you can't come in from there.
They won't let you run straight, he's gonna want a radius on there, is what he's telling you.
And that radius is not, is protected by that.
The radius is then gonna encroach within that flood hazard area.
There's a pipe, it's underground. You testified there's a pipe there.
The floodway is actually, even though the pipe is there, the floodway is still there because that area can still flood even though it's piped, if that makes sense.
Underground?
It's underground, yes, but then it opens up here. So, if this area, if this floods out, it's gonna go this way. Even though the pipes, even though there's a pipe underground, yes. So, as this, as this stream or tributary fills up, then to flood, the water's over top.
Not from us.
Not from us, from.
Of course not.
If, if this were to ever, if this were to ever flood up, it would actually back pitch down, back towards Route 35.
But to go back to the question, Matt.
Yeah, so.
Is there any way to open this entryway more to the south?
Not, no, because you have that, if you pull that, this, I'll call it the white line, it's a retaining wall, if you pull that straight down, that's just saying that flood, I'll call it the floodway. And as soon as you make an, put a radius on that driveway, you're into the floodway. So, it's, so you could do it, you can move it south, but then it doesn't line up.
Right, I was just thinking that, and then you wouldn't have to have that circulation, you could have an in and an out. And then you could add all that parking in there.
But then, to Justin's point is that now you don't have full circulation around here, so you get.
You don't need full circulation.
You do, you do, Joe, because if somebody gets in there and they're coming out where you would have the exit, how do they turn around if there's no parking there? They have to leave the front.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna drive in from 35 and go straight up. No one's making a left there and going, "Oh, I'm in the wrong spot, I'm turning around and leaving", that's the only reason why they would turn left there. They wouldn't circulate in that whole area, that area's gonna fill up first, immediately, wouldn't it?
This is the desirable area if you're coming in off of 35.
It's gonna be filled.
If you're coming in off of Logan Road, which there's discussion, you may park in this area, and if you're coming from that direction, we don't want to have to force them out onto 35 if there's no parking in the front here.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna use them, they're gonna go all the way down through the site and then come back all the way around.
There's that potential, yes.
But more importantly, even if we wanted to do it, the testimony from Matt is, that's the max we can do there.
Okay, I'm just trying to help you get more parking, that's all.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question, maybe for Bill, maybe for someone else. On page three of the plans, there's talk about monitoring wells that might need to be moved. What are they monitoring and where are they going?
Question from Matt.
Yeah, so. Let's double check where they are.
I guess we'll go to another question.
Well, no, you know what they are, though, without knowing exactly where they are. What are the monitoring wells for?
Typically, to set up a baseline throughout the property to make sure that there's no groundwater contamination and that there would be known in the future.
So, and now this is a question for Bill. Bill, do we know, is there a groundwater contamination plume somewhere in that area that they're trying to keep tabs on?
No, I did not research it, because I figured that would've come up under DEP review when they do the stream encroachment and stormwater, but I can do that for you and get an answer to you.
Yeah, I'm kinda curious.
Let me ask Jennifer, is there any known groundwater contamination?
We did a phase one, right? We did a phase one, we can submit that to Bill for his review.
Is there any known groundwater contamination?
And a phase two. I'm not sure off the top of my head, but I don't wanna answer, but we can submit the phase one and phase two.
You wouldn't normally put in a monitoring well unless there's known groundwater contamination.
Right, but there's a couple of things that go on here. So, remember now, dilutions, the solution to pollution, okay? So, they're gonna be doing some infiltration here, so that would typically help. But more importantly, and I'm sure they're doing their due diligence, usually there's a letter of no further action. And if a site has groundwater contamination and that letter is not out there, you typically wouldn't buy it. So, most of those documents should be obtainable and able to be gotten to you via email and I'll send you.
Mr. Diffig, we'll submit it via email, so then Ron can easily share it with the board members.
That works, thank you.
When you do buy it, you buy the whole problem.
Let me give a point of comfort, then, so Bill, so if there was groundwater contamination, and we see here there's a significant improvement that's proposed, would DEP pick that up in terms of their reviews?
Typically, they would, right, but I mean, the bottom line of it is, I have a site in Howell, in fact, Jim was on it with me, that had a lot of groundwater contamination from a gasoline station across Highway 33. And we developed a full site plan, I mean, everybody approved that everything was fine, and a couple monitoring wells got moved, the DEP also came in, did a remediation, using the wells to inject, I forget what the chemical is exactly, but, I mean, it's not unusual, but it doesn't mean you can't develop the site. It's just, it's never a good idea to buy a site upon which there's no letter of no further action required been issued.
Right, but Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, occasionally, they will put in a monitoring well that accesses Sentinel Well, so there not, might not be groundwater contamination on the site, but they're worried about the expanse of the plume traveling.
Yeah, somewhere else's plume, exactly.
So, I would like to see what the environmental.
Yeah, I said, we'll try to dig that up if we can get it to you.
So, are you suggesting that in light of the comments and the issues raised, are you making any suggestions in terms of condition subsequent or the like?
No, not really, I mean, we don't, you know, I don't have a problem getting the information. I'm not sure that it's any of the town's jurisdiction, most of that stuff's DEP, but I mean, as a point of interest, we can get the information for you if it helps you somehow. I'm not, I'm getting it, I don't, I wouldn't get involved in that typically.
My sole concern is on the plans we're talking about, if they need to be relocated. And since I'm not sure where they are, and I'm not sure why they're there, I wanna know where they're gonna be relocated to make sure that they're still serving their function, if there continues to be.
DEP would be the one that would require us.
Right, because they're the ones doing the monitoring, I mean.
We couldn't move them without DEP approval to move them, or the, under the direction of an LSRP.
Okay, and you haven't retained an LSRP for this site?
Well, we don't own it yet, but the short answer is, there are LSRP's on staff with the environmental company who did the phase one and the phase two, and should we close on the property and proceed for the development, of course, we would have an LSRP on site.
What did the phase one and the phase two? Okay?
Okay, okay. Any other questions by board members?
I just have one more question, I know I'm harping on compliance, but the first time that this turns into everybody shows up and all of a sudden we have a real problem, I can only imagine the phone calls coming into Town Hall because Logan Road is now choked, 35 is choked, and all of a sudden we have a huge problem. So, I guess what I'm looking for is some assurances that there is going to be some contingency plan, whether there's parking, whether you have to rent out the lot at the Land Rover, or whatever, because. whether there's parking, whether you have to rent out the lot at the Land Rover or whatever, because I can only imagine how bad Logan Road could turn into. And it does choke down when you get by Sunset Avenue there, plus, you know, people flying down, I mean, I'm guilty of it too, you come flying off of thirty-five, it's just those are the type of things that, maybe it's just once in a while thing, maybe it's once a year, maybe it's once every five years, I don't know.
Yeah, but let me, just to put it in perspective, if all of our parking was across Logan Road and we weren't providing parking on site, I would understand that, because every single time the funeral home had a funeral, there'd be those people crossing. If Land Rover were doing a giveaway, once a year, or some kind of special event at Acura, the same exact thing would happen. You can't control how many, if there's a big hearing here, I've been here where there's times, there's no parking here. They didn't know in advance that there wasn't going to, that there was gonna be that many people, this lot overflowed, people had to park at the old Boy Scouts building, and now they're walking across Deal Road. That happens, it doesn't happen regularly, but it happens, but when you look at what your ordinance requires, we're only underparked by twenty spots. And again, for that overflow of twenty that the ordinance would require, and for the infrequency in which it would happen, there may be a scenario where there are a lot of people. I can assure you that the community providing these funerals has as much interest in the safety of their community as the municipality does. And in any scenario where there are, like I said, there are people that are parking across the street, it is going to be monitored and it is going to be, um, there's gonna be professionals there directing people.
Yeah, I I very well may see, you you may have to partner up with the police department, you know, if you know you've got a big funeral,
Hundred percent.
you may very well have to say, we don't just need the one guy, we may need multiple guys there.
Which of course we would do.
I mean, you just, I can only imagine that if this turns into a circus, and God forbid anybody even gets, you know, hit or anything, then we've got a whole other scenario.
Much like the High Holidays on Monmouth Road.
Right, absolutely.
It's the same thing.
I mean, we're not putting five hundred and fifty seats in here because we're expecting thirty people. I mean, we know that these are gonna be large, potentially large funerals. So, you know, it's just, those are my concerns, coming from my side of the fence, I think that we have to take into account what the neighbors are gonna think, what's gonna go on with the traffic, I mean, these are all very important issues, because it's gonna come right back and bite the attachment in the, you know what.
So this could be a very, uh, relevant time to go back to an issue that was raised in the very beginning when there was first a discussion about monitoring at certain times. There were some comments that for every funeral, there should be, uh, required monitoring, we didn't really talk about the quality of it.
No, that would, right, that's, what we're proposing would be that for every funeral, there would be volunteers, crossing guards, people there to ensure the safety. We're also proposing to make application for the flashing signage and to put the crosswalk in. A lot of these safeties, when it it will be a large funeral and we anticipate that there will be significant overflow, in every opportunity that we can, we would coordinate with the police department, and if the police department can't do it, a private security firm to do it. So we would make every effort to do that because we have as much interest in the safety as you do. The reality is, most of these funerals happen between ten o'clock in the morning and twelve in the afternoon during the week. While I understand that, you know, Saturday, while rushing to Seve Square Mall and rushing back home or running to the beach at a busy, we're not having funerals then. You know, we're having funerals when people are at work and when people are in school.
So, Feltman, it's. Seems to me that, um, so we have an offer of volunteers being available for every funeral, uh, there's.
That that doesn't sound like for me.
Alright, so.
Yeah. What what would be, what would, how much, let's see how I could say this, what size of the building would have to be, like, what is the reduction in size of the building to meet the parking requirement?
Five hundred square feet? Five hundred square feet.
So if they reduce the building by five hundred square feet, they can meet the requirement?
Correct.
Reduced the hall.
Just the assembly hall.
The assembly hall, correct? And how many speed, how many, how many people would that change? How many rows?
Next one for twenty-five, right?
But I can be on that, though, the ordinance isn't that good.
But, but the problem with that, that doesn't limit the number of people that are gonna wanna go.
I'm I'm not, you're just asking a question, it's a simple question, I mean.
We're 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 two hours.
Alright, Ms. Krimko?
Yeah.
Um, it's it's almost ten thirty, uh, it's obvious that there have been a a lot of, uh, offers of details tonight. It seems to be talking with the chair and some other members, there's still some questions of about safety and the like, and so, uh, what I would suggest is that we have an agreement with you that you'll convene and you'll you'll come up with a proposal, you know, based on the concerns expressed by the members and anticipating others. And so come back at the next meeting, and, uh, uh, obviously, there shouldn't, shouldn't be too much time for additional testimony, and then we'll have a vote.
Okay, and that'll give me the opportunity to sum up also.
Uh, well, yeah, uh, one of the board members is pointing out that we'll have public comment, but for the record, uh, I still don't see anybody in the audience that's from the public. If between now and next time there are, it does have to be members of the public, certainly they they could come. Uh, so I I believe Ms. Krimko on behalf of her client is stipulating that.
And that's the twenty-third?
Yeah. Yeah, and how we.
No further notice?
How do we look, uh, on the docket?
No, we have two brothers.
Yeah, whose applications are those? Uh, so, Mr. Chair, um, do you believe that's the, uh, consensus of the board?
I agree.
And, uh, do you have something to say?
I would, I would just also ask, like, the packet that we were provided tonight was very inadequate as it related to everything that we saw tonight.
Everyone, and everyone can come into my office ten days prior, all of the plans are there.
I understand, but for for the board, it would be nice.
I will bring you eleven by seventeen.
And that would be. Get some of this sort of stuff so we don't have it.
You should be looking at it ten days earlier in large form, so when you come here, everything's not.
I understand, but it.
May I make a suggestion, if possible? A lot of, what a lot of boards are requiring is that we actually submit PDF copies so it can be circulated, so I'm happy to give you whatever you need on PDF also, and you can send it out for them to review at home.
We'll talk in.
You have C at ten AM, less than twelve hours.
In eleven hours, thank you.
So, did you, did you have an answer to my question?
Oh, seventy-three people.
Seventy-three people, thank you.
Any other, uh, comments by the board before this matter is adjourned without additional notice until the next meeting?
Like, like to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, a mo- a motion to adjourn this hearing.
Yes, sorry, to adjourn this hearing.
Notice, second.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
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 Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion, second.
Second from the motion to adjourn the meeting, I'll second.
No, I'm 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 planning. I don't get down and block them. If I could get anything that I can now, like.
Yes.
Here.
Yes. How how long did you say?
That's not physically possible, a lot of us don't really give accommodations to allow us to do this, like.